Test one, two, one, two. Test one, two.
All right, welcome everyone to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, October 17th. All selectmen are present. First, we have what should have been a scheduled appointment hearing. Mr. Purple.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Read the public hearing notice. The Board of Selectmen shall hold a public hearing Tuesday, October 17th, 6:30 PM. The McCall of Hearing Room, Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. To consider a petition by Verizon New England Incorporated and Mass Electric Company, N-Grid, for joint or identical pole location on the easterly side of Middle Road at a point approximately 1,390 feet southerly from the center line of Boston Worcester Turnpike as shown in Verizon Plan numbered one, A2DQRX. All interested parties are encouraged to attend Southborough Board of Selectmen, October 2nd, 2017. Mr. Chairman, I had correspondence with Mr. Berset from Verizon late last week, and again today, and he confirmed that this hearing is not needed, and therefore would ask that the hearing be closed without a finding.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right. So we'd like to invite the police chief up. Sir.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening, Chief.
So I'll just be brief. Looking to add one more part-time telecommunications officer. I believe when I started, we had four. We're currently down to two. John Thorburn and Charles Goodwin, they do a great job filling in and taking some of the pressure of the vacant shifts off of the full-time officers. So we put out an advertisement, and we've decided to go ahead and ask permission to add one. Actually, a lot of training involved, just to get one person up to speed on this. So I'd like to have you consider my recommendation to hire Mr. Austin Chapsky. He's a resident of town. He's worked with the town's recreation department in the past. He's an Algonquin graduate, currently in his junior year at Worcester State, majoring in criminal justice. He's participated in our Junior Police Academy, and I had the pleasure of getting to know him this spring. He participated in our Adult Citizens Police Academy, and he has a sincere interest in the criminal justice field. His brother is a full-time telecommunications officer for us, and I'm asking that you appoint him tonight, and we'd be starting him out at grade nine of the SAP 1472 an hour.
Questions for the chief? Anyone?
None for me.
All right, same here. I think it'd be a great pick, a great addition to the team. Fully supportive. I would move that we support the chief's recommendation to hire Austin Chapsky as a part-time telecommunications officer at the grade stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. I was also speaking with Mark earlier. We've had some good luck with regular offices and dispatches coming from town, so we hope to continue that tradition here.
Same here.
Wonderful.
All right.
Thank you, chief.
Have a good night. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Purple. We also have, under other items before the board, approval of Senate council changes to H.3717.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have on your, you have in front of you, and I received this just recently from Ryan Gelman, who is the aide in Senator Eldredge's office, who is handling this House bill. Again, this is the bill that is allowing us to do the transaction with St. Marks regarding the golf course. There was a couple of issues that felt it needed legislative approval, and Senate council has reviewed the bill, and one piece was added into it, which was a new section three. It says this act shall take effect upon its passage. Nothing else has changed. That simply means otherwise, if this was not in, then it would be, the effective date is automatically 30 days after the signature of the governor, and given the fact that this legislative process is taking as long as it has, even though I appreciate the efforts of everyone from the senator's office, as well as town council, I think this will help to expedite the matter. So any change does require local approval, and the board will need to approve this. I then will, Ms. Hale will complete those section of the minutes. We'll provide those to the town clerk, have them certified, send that to the Senate, and they will get that to the floor as quickly as possible.
I think it makes complete sense. It's a bonus for the town. It's only going to help us. Any questions for Mr. Purple? No? Okay. I would move that we approve Senate council changes to H.3717 as provided. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Purple. We also have some consent agenda items. If there are no holds by anyone, I would move that we approve items one through six, and I'll read, some of these include people who are volunteering for our town, which is, as we know, has been a challenge at times, and we have some folks here who have raised their hand, stepped up and are serving their town. We would move to appoint Jennifer Hansen to the Southborough Culture Arts Council. We would move to appoint Chelsea Bradley Francis to the Southborough Cultural Arts Council as well. We would be accepting a $500 donation for the Fayetteville Playground project. We would also appoint Michael Robbins to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate, and we would appoint Mary Mathan to the Southborough Scholarship Advisory Committee, and then we would approve the November 7th election warrant. All right? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment before you do vote? I just want to point out on item number four, appointing Mr. Robbins to ZB alternate position. As you recall, this was held at the last meeting to do further advertising. We did as much advertising for this as we could, had it out everywhere, and I just wanted to make sure the board was aware. We did receive no other applicants.
Yes.
And so that is why it's on the consent agenda this evening.
Perfect. Thank you.
It continues to be a challenge finding volunteers. We were thankful to Mr. Robbins for volunteering. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there a town administrator report?
There is, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of, a couple of things this evening. First of all, I just want to remind you, we did get notice about, a notice about Candidates Night, Wednesday, November 1st, at the library. All important refreshments will be served. So, and there's 6:30 to 7 o'clock is the meet and greet, 7:00 to 8:30 is a Q and A with four candidates running for the board, and it will be filmed and replay posted on Southborough Access Media. The RFP for Golf Management Services for the golf course is advertised to be on the street this week. It will have a closing date of November 7th, and hopefully you will have something before you at your second meeting in November to execute for the services. It's a little bit tricky at this point, because we're looking to provide services for a golf course on a piece of property that we don't yet own. Council has opined that it is perfectly permissible for us to do that. The caveat was placed in the RFP that should the town not take ownership of the property as expected through the purchase and sale, then obviously all bids would be, you know, be considered null and void. So there is, there is that in there. Yesterday, yesterday afternoon, there was a ribbon cutting at Hola, the new Mexican restaurant that we have in town. It was, it was nice to see people in there who had no idea what was going on, just enjoying themselves there for the food, and so Selectmen Bracio was there to help, to help cut the ribbon, and Vanessa Hale and myself. So it was nice, nice to welcome them to town, and hopefully, you know, they do well. I've heard, I've heard good things from people about the food. The...
I'll note one alibi, that there's also another ribbon cutting on Thursday.
Yes.
Thursday night, another new business in town. Southborough Wellness is opened up next to Sperry's Country Market, next to Red Barn Inn, and there'll be a, an open house and a ribbon cutting at Southborough Wellness on Thursday from 7 to 9. Everyone, of course, is welcome. Any selectmen that can attend, I'll be there, and as well as the public. So, Southborough Wellness.
Just a couple of other items quickly. So last Friday, I was in charge and of a Mass Municipal Management Association event that we do every year. It's called our Boot Camp for Managers, and I'm pleased to say that we had about 50 to 60 prospective new town manager, town administrator, people who came. Most of them are high-level department heads. Some of them, you know, work in other fields and interested, and we're trying to get them interested in local government. And as you, you know, you may know, there's a little bit of a dearth of candidates, a lot of the people are graying out of the profession, and so we're getting people interested. It was a very good group. Glad to see a lot of women in the group, you know, because we don't see a lot of diversity, you know, in a lot of the managers, and so I just, you know, wanted to point that out, that it was, it was great to be doing that and to get, you know, people involved. The only, no, actually, I'm going to stop there.
All right, and we have a few more minutes before our next, you know, before our next public hearing, which is the tax classification hearing. I would yield my chairman's report time to Selectmen Bracio. Ma'am.
Thank you. I just wanted to first thank the board and the town committees. We are actually very proud to be hosting here in Southborough on Saturday a drive, relief drive for Puerto Rico. I've had a lot of interest from people. I've had a lot of people questioning whether we can do it, and we were very fortunate that a Southborough resident who actually is a Puerto Rico native stepped forward, and she's coordinated with Puerto Rico Rises, and I'm proud to say on Saturday, we're hoping Southborough opens their hearts once again, and we're able to help some people in very much need. The nice thing about this particular drive is the San Juan, I know everyone's heard about the San Juan port, everything being backed up. There's two other ports there, and this organization has island people actually helping with the transportation and everything, so it is going to get quicker to the places that need it, just because of the backlog. So, very, very proud and honored to once again be able to do something here in Southborough to help those in need. And also, I would like to, with the board's support, work with the schools to bring a program called Southborough to Southborough. Together, we have a sister city in the Southborough in the UK, and I thought, what a great opportunity for our kids at school to learn about a sister city. So I would like to work with the schools to reach out and be able to put a program in place with the technology nowadays. In my days, it was Penn Pals, but nowadays, it's emails and Skype and everything else, and I think what a great opportunity with the school's support, that we could open the doors to a sister city and learn a whole different country's culture, and I just think it's a great opportunity. So I would hope that with the board's support, we could, I could reach out to the schools, and with you on the school committee as well, we can work to do something really positive for our school kids and for the town in general.
I think it's a great idea.
Great idea.
Awesome.
Great concept.
Thank you.
That was my support.
Perfect. Okay, so next we'll have our tax classification hearing. It's a joint hearing with the Board of Assessors, if they'd like to join us. Do you have to read a notice?
Yes. This is the public hearing notice. Southborough Board of Selectmen should hold a public hearing with the Board of Assessors on Tuesday, October 17th, 6:45 PM, to determine the certified valuation of each class of property, the minimum residential factor, and the allocation of the tax burden among the four classes of real property: residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Hearing will be held in the McCall of Hearing Room, Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. Interested citizens may present oral or written views prior to or during the public hearing respectfully, Board of Selectmen, Board of Assessors, October 2nd, 2017.
Excellent. Sibelli, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, honorable board members, here we are at our annual tax classification hearing. So we're going to flip through. Hopefully, this goes off all right. We got a quick PowerPoint presentation. I mean, a 700 slides should only take two hours. We'll have you out by 11. We're going to zip through this, Mr. Chairman. We will have selectmen comment, then we'll open it up for the floor, for the residents, if there's any comment there, and then hopefully have a vote tonight. You ready to start? With us tonight here is our, the Board of Assessors, Tom Beaumont, chairman, and Jeff Klein, my deputy assessor, Cindy MacLeod, and we have Tammy Rice, who's going to run the PowerPoint presentation. Very usual, I'm not allowed to touch technology. So, we'll start off real quick. What is tax classification, which is a good question? Allows communities to have different tax rates for certain classes of property. We have residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property, which are known as CIP. State statute provides a maximum allowable portion of the tax levy, up to 150%, to be borne by the CIP classes. Provides a minimum allowable portion to be borne by the residential class. Tax classification key concepts: Allows the Board of Selectmen to make a decision whether or not to shift tax burden from one class of property to another. No additional tax dollars are raised as the levy remains the same. Town of Southborough has never had a split tax rate, and this is an issue of fairness between classes. Fiscal year assessments, the FY '18 assessments are based on analysis of calendar year 2016 sales and market conditions. The '18 assessments reflect the value of properties as of January 1, 2017, per Department of Revenue guidelines. Calendar year '17 sales and market conditions will be reflected in the FY '19 assessments, as there is a one-year time lag in the assessment process. The town's total taxable value increased by $90.81 million this year to $2.441 billion. This increase represents the sixth consecutive year the total value has increased, and once again is the highest total value in town history. Here we have the breakdown of the assessment values by class. If you look above the maroon line to compare the '17 to '18, you'll see that all classes of property this year increased in value. Residential's up approximately 3.6, commercial is up 3.8%, industrial is up about 7.6%, and again, this is the total value of the class. Does not mean that every property for residential went up 3.6. Some could see some significant increases, some minimal increases. It reflects the market values of properties. Just one other quick note on the personal property, class five, personal property value increased. This isn't due to increased in values. It's really new growth within the class. We had quite a bit, much more than typical, and it's not due to rising values.
Paul, what typically comes under personal property? What would you?
Personal property is mostly businesses, some are home businesses, that have equipment for their, for their business. A pizza place, the ovens, things of that nature.
Okay.
Depending on the type of personal property account is what is dependent on what can be taxed.
Okay.
Okay? So not everybody, you know, if you're a incorporated, or if you're an LLC, different things are taxed either here or at the state level.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Fiscal year '18, new growth. The assessors calculated 39.992 million in new growth value within the town. This represents about $655,085 in new growth tax dollars. This is about a 27.28% increase in new growth from '17. Should be noted, though, that about $374,057 of our total new growth, again, is attributed to the personal property, which, unlike real property, depreciates over time. So over time, it doesn't really help absorb tax increases. What you really want to see is a more beneficial, to see the new growth being generated from your real property improvements, as opposed to personal property, because obviously, over time, real estate typically rises in value. Just a quick look at new growth history. Got about an eight-year span there. So the new growth increased, again, by significant personal property new growth. Okay? So that's 655085. Again, 57% of that is personal property. Just a quick reminder, as you're looking at that, FY '14 through '16, you see the spike in new growth, and again, that's really to remind everybody from the new growth realized from Madison Place, Fair Lane, and Kenley Lane subdivisions that were all going on in that timeframe. Let's talk about the average single-family assessed value. Average single-family home assessed value increased $19,300 to $596,800, knocking on the door here of $600,000. It's a 3.3% increase. This is the eighth consecutive year. It has risen. Also, keep in mind, as values are rising, it puts downward pressure on the tax rate. So if we stick with a single rate, the impact, the tax rate would decrease from, would decrease 1.47%. It would drop from 1638 to 1614. The average single-family tax bill would rise from $9,459 in '17 to $9,632 in '18. It's a $173 increase, or 1.83%. Reminder that this excludes the community preservation surcharge on a single-family home. You're looking at about an additional $80, as you see down there in the right-hand corner. And it's also important to realize that commercial, industrial also pay the CPA surcharge, and on the average building, that's about $418.93. Let's give you an eight-year history, just to kind of look at the average single-family tax bill. Back in '11, we were $7,900 bucks. We're now up around $96. And remember, we've got the public safety complex that has yet to hit the tax, tax bills, which will certainly vault at over $10,000. Just something to keep in mind as we head towards budget season, tighten the belts. Okay, let's look at the relationship of class values. Fiscal year '18, so commercial, industrial, and personal property classes combined represent 19.4% of the town's total value, which is really not a real large percentage, but not bad for a small town. This is up slightly from the previous year of 19.16. Historically, if you look back 15, 20 years, we bounced between 17 and 20%, so it hasn't changed a great deal. Okay, recommendation. The Board of Assessors unanimously recommend continuing with a single tax rate for fiscal year '18. Some of the reasons that they consider. The board believes a single tax rate helps small town like Southborough attract new businesses into the community while retaining those already located in town. Expanding businesses within the community provides new tax dollars with little impact on costly services. With the relatively small percentage of value that comes from the CIP, so again, it's 19.4%, a split rate would only produce a small savings to the residential class and would increase the CPA, CIP classes, making Southborough a less attractive place to conduct business. We'll show you a slide in a little bit that kind of pounds that home. Although CPA properties account for 5.98% of Southborough's taxable parcels, they generate 19.40% of the town's total tax revenue. So in tax dollars, you're looking at about $7.6 million that comes from those, that small amount of parcels. This figure includes personal property taxes, which many businesses pay in addition to their real estate taxes. You also want to consider the CIP makeup. Southborough CIP is comprised of mostly small businesses, not the big box stores or the large corporations that you see in some of the towns with the abutting towns that have split rates. The Board of Assessors also recognizes the role businesses play in contributing additional funds to support many of the town's athletic, recreational, and community events. Think our businesses do a great job stepping up and helping out. Additional facts to consider, you have 242 of the 351. That's 69% of the Massachusetts communities had a single rate in fiscal year '17, which is the same as the previous year. Again, 15, the town meeting voted overwhelmingly to defeat a non-binding article to have a split tax rate, and in the 15-town meeting also voted to fund a part-time economic development coordinator to help expand future businesses' development within the community, thus a split rate would be prohibitive to the EDC's goals. Through this slide in there, because I think, again, it shows you a little bit what happens with the tax rate shift. So you have the single-family home, the average value there of $596.8. If you kept, again, with a single rate, 1614, you have, there's your average tax bill of $96.32. Commercial, industrial improved property. So if we look at the commercial and industrial classes, and we strip away all the vacant land and the condos, so you just have the average improved property, that assessment is about $2,595,600, and the average tax bill would be $41,893. And this is just on the real estate, doesn't include anything they generate from personal property. Now, let's take a look at if we look at a 5% tax shift scenario. So the residential rate would decrease to 1595. By the way, I had a wrong number there on your packet that I sent you. That number was incorrect. So it would, it would reduce, again, from 1614 down to 1595, and the commercial rate would pop up to 1695. So 1595 and 1695. So you have a 1.2% savings to the residential, and if you look there on the bottom corner on the right, it would increase the commercial by 5%. Again, that's really tied to the percentage of your commercial, industrial, personal property. Obviously, it would be quite different if we had 40% of our value being derived from that, and it's not. Again, we're under 20%. A lot of people like to see, well, where does Southborough's tax rate stand amongst other communities? Remember, we're setting an 18 rate. Most towns have not set 18 rates. We're one of the earlier towns in the area. So we look back at the '17. Again, it's going to show our rate from last year at 1638, and there's the rates from the surrounding communities. Mr. Chairman, that's pretty much all we have. Again, a real quick slideshow. Further items, there's a selectmen discussion. We'll move to open the floor to some public comment, and then a selectmen vote on the rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sibelli. So I- So I appreciate the analysis that you've put together, you and the members of the board. And, you know, not surprisingly, as in previous years, I remain committed to a single tax rate. I think it's the best thing for our town, for our residents, as well as for our businesses. You've noted that so many of our businesses really do a lot to participate actively in our community and help support town athletics. You go down to Finn and you'll see all sorts of businesses that donate every year to help support Southborough Youth Baseball and so many other teams. For anyone who attends Southborough Nights, or Summer Nights, excuse me, that doesn't happen without an outstanding participation from our business community in providing so many donations to help make that wonderful event happen every year. So like you, I believe it's a fairness matter. It's, I'm not looking to pit one resident against another. And I say that because many of our businesses in Southborough are owned by Southborough residents. And so again, I think it's the best thing for a community. I have had so many businesses come and tell me, Dan, if you move to a, you know, a split tax rate and end up, you know, assessing us more, I have no other option than to look at other surrounding towns to move my, you know, where I should move my business to, to remain competitive. And I've had, you know, businesses that are, we just had two. We had an opening with Ola. We have an opening, grand opening on Thursday with Southborough Wellness. We have welcomed two new businesses to Southborough. We have a competitive tax rate to offer. Southborough is open for business. And I look to see it remain that way. So thank you for the analysis that you have done, Mr. Shea.
Again, thanks for the presentation, to you and to the board as well. And again, going into this, my position is the same as it has been the last two times we voted on this, is to maintain the single tax rate as well. I would be curious to hear if there are other opinions supportive of the split tax rate. I haven't seen arguments where CIP properties have been demonstrated to use town services at a higher rate than residential. So I don't think that justification to pass an increased burden upon them is, has been made. So again, thanks for your presentation.
Ms. Fannin.
Thanks for the presentation and putting it together and concisely. I agree with Mr. Shea. I'd like, I'm interested in what the public has to say.
Ms. Brock, you?
I also agree with Mr. Shea. I'd like to hear what the public has to say. But I would like to thank you for the presentation. And I would like to also thank you for sitting with me and making me Tax Assessor Smart. I greatly appreciated that you answered the majority of the questions that I had. And I thank you for that.
We love our selectmen informed.
Thank you.
All right. So if there are members of the community, residents, or business owners that would like to comment, please step to the podium, state who you are, and your address. And we'll start with whomever would like to go first.
Sir, welcome. Good evening. My name is Bob McDonald. I represent Dell EMC. And like in past years, we look at all the communities that we have improvements in. And all our other communities that we have major improvements in also have a single tax rate, which we appreciate. And we would like the board to vote for a single tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming.
Anyone else? I will also note, we had a couple of letters come in. One from the corridor nine, Area Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors, strongly encouraging the board to maintain a single tax rate. Also, a letter from the Economic Development Committee, signed by the Chair, David McKay, similarly supporting the maintenance of a single tax rate. Not hearing anything else from the public. Are we ready to close the hearing?
We are.
All right. So I will make a motion and then we'll discuss. But I will move that we vote to support a single tax rate for the next fiscal year. For discussion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so we vote to support the recommendation as provided by the assessors. All right. There was a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I need a two-minute timeout for some signatures and I'll be off.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sibelli. Okay. Next, we will have Peregrine Energy Group. We're going to discuss municipal aggregation electricity.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So this evening, we have with us, we have Marlena Patton from Peregrine Energy. You may remember, she's been with us previously to talk a little bit about the aggregation program that the town has been pursuing based on the town meeting vote for electricity. This would allow the town to do, you know, a large procurement, which would allow all of the residents to take advantage of a better rate than that can, that can be provided from National Grid. Also here with us this evening is John Shortsleeve. There he is. And, you know, Marlena will go through her presentation. Just give the board an update as to where we are, next steps. If you want to drill down a little bit, you can listen to John. So we'll go from there and see where you want to go. But I could turn it over to Marlena.
Sure, thanks. Hi, nice to see you all. So this should be hopefully pretty short. And like you said, if you have more questions, we can turn it over. So just a quick review of what aggregation is, since you probably don't spend all your time thinking about it. So it's a group purchasing program around the electricity supply part of everybody's National Grid bill. So we use the bulk purchasing power of the community to negotiate a price for everybody and choose a supplier that's going to serve everybody. In this case, the way it works, National Grid's going to continue to be the electric utility for the entire community. Everybody still gets their electric bill from National Grid. But on the supply portion of the National Grid bill, you'll see the name of whatever supplier the town chooses. And the rates that's used to calculate that part of the bill will be the rate that the town negotiates instead of the rate that National Grid provides through their basic service offering. All utility basic service customers, so all National Grid basic service customers would be automatically enrolled in the program. And a National Grid basic service customer is anyone who has not already established a supply contract on their own. So anybody who's just kind of going with the default National Grid service would be automatically enrolled into the program. But they can opt out anytime if they want. So the automatic enrollment is not a permanent state. And they actually have the option to opt out before the program launches. There'll be a notification that goes out. And then they retain that right anytime after the program is launched too, which is a nice difference between this type of program and a lot of the other offers that folks get in the mail and over the phone that often have a minimum participation period and an early termination fee. So a quick overview of kind of where we are in the process of implementing this. We've been working on it for a little while. So this always starts with a town meeting vote to pursue aggregation, which happened here back in April of two thousand and sixteen. The last time you saw me was right at that, right before that Massachusetts DOR review period. So there's a regulatory approval process with the state that is required for programs like these. And we're just finished, we just finished that. So we went through a review by the Massachusetts DOR, which happened last December. And then we went through a DPU review and approval process that included a public hearing in March. And we've just received the order in September. And with that order, we're now clear to move forward with the program. That was kind of the gating factor. So the next step that we're moving into where that peach bar is, is the procurement process. So this is where we put a bid out to the marketplace. We solicit prices from multiple electricity suppliers. We help you review those prices. If you like what you see, you select a supplier and sign a contract. That, right now, that bid date is scheduled for November twenty-first. You can see right there. That's when you would get the prices in. And then, once that contract is signed, then we move into an education and outreach period. It's a required period by the DPU. And it includes a couple key things. The primary piece is a notification letter that goes out to anybody that's going to be automatically enrolled into the program, saying, here's what the program is, here are the prices. And if you don't want to participate, you don't have to. Here's how you opt out. That mailing, the cost, and the mailing execution is all borne by the supplier. The town doesn't do that. But the letter has already been approved by the state. So we're pretty good to go with that. Then there's some other pieces. I'll go into a little bit more in a second. That's likely to go out early. January is kind of my guess. It depends on who the supplier is that you choose and kind of what their mailing processes are. But that's roughly my guess. That's not set in stone. And then, if that happened, then we could launch the program potentially as early as a February meter reads. And remember, your electric meter is read every month, right about the time your bill is put together. So all these things always happen on meter read dates. So we say the program launches with the meter reads instead of on February first, because everybody's individual participation would happen starting with a meter read. So just one more quick slide. People often want to jump immediately to, okay, we're launching this. What about the public? What do we tell them? And are they going to call us with questions? So the public education piece is what I was talking about before. This runs for about six to eight weeks. It depends, again, on the supplier that we choose and kind of what it takes to get the mail out the door and then to start the enrollments. The key piece is that informational letter that's mailed to everybody. So everybody that's going to be automatically enrolled will get that. We've had a program website up with just some really cursory information so that if anybody had questions, they would at least have a home online. So that's up now. And we'll be updating that with more specifics around the program once a contract is signed. There would be public information sessions. Typically, communities do two or three of those. And usually, it's one for the seniors and then one or two for the general community. We can do whatever works for you guys. And then customer support by phone and email, we provide that. And in fact, that email address and the phone number are already live. We haven't publicized them anywhere, but they do work already. So if people had questions and we put that out there, we could already start answering those questions. And then anything else you folks feel works for Southborough, whether that means a sign or a banner in town or our participation at events with brochures, whatever works for you guys. So I would be talking to you to figure out what makes the most sense. And anyone who doesn't want to participate can begin opting out as soon as that initial letter goes out. You know, between then and when the launch happens. And that's my overview, if you have any questions.
So I'll start. So the opt-out. So in your experience with other communities, what kind of percentage of, have you seen of residents who actually choose to opt out?
So at program launch, which is really when you kind of measure it, because after that, people are just moving in and out and it's hard to track it. The suppliers tell us they typically budget for ten percent. We haven't seen anything that high. We see a pretty wide range, anywhere between like two and six or eight. I'd say six or eight is pretty typically what we get. It's low. It's a real minority of people that typically opt out.
And in that minority of people who opt out, is there a, any particular reason that jumps out that, as to why they do?
It can really vary. For some folks, they don't like the local government making decisions for them about programs. So that's some folks. For some folks, it depends on, if you sign, for example, a contract, that's a year-long contract with a supplier, in that twelve-month period, the utility price, the National Grid price that they would charge will change at least once. Because the National Grid price for the supply part of your bill is, changes every six months. And so what that means is you sign a price, but you don't always know the future prices that you're comparing it to, the contract price. And so some people don't like that uncertainty. So for that reason, they might, they might choose not to sign it or not to participate. Those are kind of the two, the two main reasons I hear. Some people just don't like, just don't like programs that somebody else thought of. They just want to make up their own mind. And I think those are the pretty typical ones. It's the minority of folks who don't participate. And what we tell a lot of folks that call, that are nervous about it, some folks get nervous also because they're getting marketed to by other programs and they're not sure if this program is legitimate or is another marketing offer. And what we tell them, we assure them, it's definitely a municipal offer. It's been a vetted program by the town that really makes it different from any contract they're going to sign. And that they can get out anytime. And that goes a long way, knowing the door's open to assuaging concerns that people have about programs like this.
Okay. And that was my final question you just answered. They could get out, they could opt out at any time during the program if they so chose?
Yeah. And I think a lot of times when I do public information sessions or I take calls, folks that call up with concerns feel a lot better once they know that door is always open. There's definitely, there's no minimum participation period. There's no early termination fee. They are not locked in. The only folks that are locked in, it's the town locking in the supplier with a price. But individual participants are never locked in.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Shea?
Just curious if there are other communities that are in about the same stage that we are, getting ready to put RFPs out? Or then how bids are coming in for other communities at this time?
We are working through the process with some other aggregations that are already launched, that their supply contracts are coming up and need to go out to bid. Don would actually be the person to talk a little bit about that if he wanted to learn a little bit more about what he's seen in the market.
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Please.
Try that question one more time.
So just curious, if there are other communities at the same stage that we are, you know, getting ready to put RFPs out or in the bidding stage? And how are you seeing rates, how are you seeing the bids come in for the communities?
So we've done fifteen of these procurements in the last twelve months for fifteen communities. There's, Southborough and Newton are the two newest communities that have come into the Bay State Peregrine team. We found a pretty, I mean, those fifteen communities that we represent, seventeen now that we represent, I think there are about ninety, Paul, in the state? Operational aggregations, is that right?
You have more, well, over a hundred now.
Over a hundred that are, of the three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns have operational aggregations. So all of them are constantly, you know, procuring new contracts. Does that answer your question?
And the bids that you're getting are favorable for?
The bids, all fifteen of our operational aggregations have rates that are below, in the current contracts, that are below the supply rate. But what I will say is that when you sign one of these contracts, you cannot be assured that, you know, you don't know what the basic service rate's going to be in the future. You know what it is when you start. We have a pretty good, you know, idea about where we think it's headed, but that's just an estimate. So you always know that you're saving money at the get-go. You always know you have a better contract. But you need to be careful about how you characterize the, you know, the savings. You don't want to guarantee savings, you know, for every month of the deal.
Okay.
Ms. Fannin?
I'm just curious, your community outreach that you've done already, what has been the participation from the communities in those educational outreach?
It's a great question. And it really has very dramatically, community to community, and even populations within the community. In general, I would say our presentations to senior centers are our best attended. The most people and the most lively set of questions. Very engaged audiences. But the number of people that walk in the door just for any presentation can really, really vary. We've had as little as one or two people. And I think the largest was over eighty in one community. So it, I think, depends in some part on whether the community members are really attuned to the typical communication vehicles that are to the typical communication vehicles that are, that the town uses to get the word out about events. And just, we should make sure that we try to make use of all those communication vehicles, um, so people, people see the information.
So that component would be up to the town of Southborough to see that it's properly advertised for individuals to participate, if they choose to participate.
In the public information sessions? Yeah. So I work with you guys, um, to understand what makes sense. Like, how do people find out information in Southborough about Southborough events? And then whatever is the right, whatever are the right vehicles are here, then we do that. And if, uh, again, like I said, if that means, um, you have some events, like, community events that precede when the information sessions might be and it makes sense for me to come to those and say, hey, there's some sessions coming up, uh, I can do that. Um, typically, we do, uh, cable access interview. And if we can try and schedule that before the information sessions, we can advertise that there. There's always, uh, an announcement that goes out because you've signed the contract. You can out officially announce the program and that's a great place to do the, um, mention of the, uh, community information sessions. We put them on the website. Um, if there are any newsletters or email lists, Facebook posts, things like that, uh, we would want to use all of those vehicles to get the word out about these sessions.
Thank you.
Ms. Mark, you?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to actually, uh, ask a question similar to Mr. Shea's and I don't know if you can answer it, but I, I'll ask it anyway. Um, is there, on an average or historically, based on the rates, um, an idea of how much savings there would actually be to a taxpayer? Um, and again, I'm not holding you to the fire. I'm just trying to get an average or an idea, because I know it's a question we're all going to be asked.
Sure. Um, the last time I looked at that, um, is probably a year ago. Um, and at the time, the average savings as compared to the utility rate was about three tenths of a cent.
Okay.
It's not a lot of money, you know, per household. It can add up, you know, townwide, but, um, this, this is not something you do because you're going to save hundreds and hundreds of dollars. It's, it's something, I, I think one of the real values of this, as Marlena said, is to have, th- this industry, it does have some companies that prey on vulnerable populations like seniors. And, um, uh, I think one of the most valuable things is a well-vetted option that you can get out of at any time that is town endorsed is a, is a value to, to, to the community.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that answer and I think that will go a long way to questions that people may have about this. And thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Purple.
And Mr. Chairman, there is, there is one other piece and I, I can have, um, Mr. Shortsleeve elaborate if you want. Um, but the, uh, the long and short of it is, is that obviously electricity is a very volatile market and price change, prices change very quickly. Um, I've been through this process, uh, actually with, with John a couple of times. And, um, bids come in, you know, 10 o'clock in the morning, 11 o'clock in the morning, and we have until 1 o'clock to make a decision. Do we want to accept the price or not? Um, and that doesn't work real well for, you know, the board that meets the first and, and, and third Tuesdays of the month. So I would ask that this board either authorize me to use my best judgment in terms of when the pricing comes in, to make that decision on behalf of the board. If the board wants to authorize the chair to work in conjunction with me when the pricing comes in, however you'd like to do that, but that, that's one of the, I don't want to say it's a quirk, but it's a necessity of this process, given how quickly the pricing changes, um, from, you know, from one bid. It can change very drastically from day to day, um, having been through this process. So I think the board should at least make a decision on that piece tonight, um, and, and how you want to do that, what your comfort level is.
So I'll state that my comfort level is with Mr. Purple, that he would do that and I would like to hear from others.
Yeah. I agree as well. That's...
I'm comfortable.
Me too.
So my comfort level, I wouldn't mind having at least one of you.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be happy to.
So I, you know, so that's, that's fine. I just would like to at least have one other person involved in this with me. Um, obviously, the recommendation will come from Mr. Shortsleeve, uh, and then we will, you know, we can move from there. We can have that discussion, but I would like to at least have one other person.
Well, I'm happy to be that person unless anyone else wants to volunteer for it.
That's fine. That's fine. But we can anticipate an update at our next meeting if we hear?
Well, so if you, if you notice, it was up on the slide, it's, it's November 21st, which is, uh, actually our second meeting in November. So we can have an update that evening as to what the pricing, you know, whether or not the pricing was favorable and we, we decided to accept and what we did and what are the terms? Or the pricing was not favorable and we'll be looking at another bid date, um, potentially, uh, you know, later in the year.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Any further?
That's it.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Interviews?
Yes.
Are we doing these in order?
Do you want me to?
Yeah. Okay. Next, we're going to have interviews and our appointments for some town boards and committees. Mr. Purple?
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, I just want to correct. So you have, you have in your pack, it's a spreadsheet. Uh, tonight, we're looking at, uh, appointments, uh, to the, um, the new statutory economic development committee, um, the St. Mark's Golf Course Conservation Restriction Working Group, which is an ad hoc, um, Fayetteville Hall Disposition Committee, which is ad hoc, and then Recreation Commission, um, for, uh, one position. I just want to make a couple of corrections to this sheet before we begin to move forward. Under Economic Development Committee, um, I've received notice from Mr. Perry and Mr. Welsh that they, um, you know, do not want to be considered further at this time for appointment. And, um, then had a conversation with Ms. Wenzel. Um, she actually, she owns a business in town, however, she lives in Marlboro. And because of the bylaw that was passed, obviously, to be on a statutory, uh, or bylaw committee, you do need to be a town resident. So she would not be eligible to be on, however, she did say that she would, uh, be willing to provide whatever assistance she could, you know, moving forward. So I will pass that along once the committee is all set. Um, everything is, is correct for the, uh, golf course and the Fayetteville Hall Committees. Uh, the one correction I will make under Recreation, um, it is, uh, it is Jennifer Hansen, not Jennifer Pullen. Um, and, uh, and, and that is the, uh, Ms. Hansen is the, uh, volunteer who is seeking, uh, to be on the Recreation Commission. So, uh, this evening, um, I have, um, at the, um, checking with the chair, any members that the board has either, you know, interviewed recently, familiar with, um, that, um, I've invited them to come in, not necessarily, uh, for formal, uh, interviews this evening, but, um, uh, the, uh, the, the members who are new to you or that you have not seen, um, in this capacity, I've asked them to come in, um, in, in, in some cases, you know, there may only be one person for that opening. However, I think it's good for the board to at least have some familiarity with the people that you're putting on this committee. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll...
Okay.
Turn it over to you.
All right. So, so if I have it correct then, for the EDC, we have, uh, a total of nine voting members and currently, one, two, three, four, we have six?
You have six members on the current ad hoc committee who are asking to be reappointed, or asking to be appointed to the new committee. So essentially, if the board so chose, these six members would be moving from the ad hoc to the statutory committee. You, you then have three additional positions, um, of which you have two candidates for those three slots.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, what about the terms for these?
Well, that's, that's a discussion. You started with the hard one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's the, that's the interesting one. Obviously, they need to be, there need to be, um, uh, three staggered year terms. So you will need to pick three for three, three for two, and three for one.
Oh, boy. Um, all right. I have a couple of thoughts where to begin on this one, at least for those incumbents. Um, and so, well, the other point, of course, is do the members want to be, so in particular, Dave McKay, who's the chair, um, you know, a three-year term makes sense. Um, I, you, you know, same, you know, I don't know if he wants a three-year term. So how do you, we set the term tonight. He's not here. Um, you have any suggestions on that? We just set it and if he accepts it?
I, I think, I think you set, I think you set the terms. Um, you set the terms as, you know, as you see fit. If you'd like me to, I can do that while you're conducting the interviews.
Okay. Uh, so we have two, um, two folks for, um, three available positions. So those two folks are again, Mr. Purple?
Uh, you have, uh, Mr. William Estrada and, uh, Mr. John Wood.
Okay. Um, uh, Mr. Estrada? Mr. Estrada, is he here? Okay.
He's not here, so.
I don't know. Okay. Um, and then I know Mr. Wood well. So I think he would be an outstanding addition to the EDC. I don't need to interview Mr. Wood. He has served in, in other capacities in the town and done incredibly well.
Yep.
Um, so...
I agree.
Thoughts? Okay. Um, so I guess I would first move that each of the incumbents is, um, is added, as well as, um, Mr. Wood. Um, I don't know if anyone knows Mr. Estrada. And then, and so let's start with, let's start with those seven.
Yep.
All right. Um, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We still need to set the terms.
We do.
We'll get some, maybe we'll get some assistance from Mr. Purple. All right. So, Mr. Estrada, we have a volunteer form, at least from him?
Yeah.
Is anyone on the board familiar with Mr. Estrada?
No.
No.
Nope.
No.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, you don't necessarily need to, you know, fill all the positions this evening. So, um, you can fill what you have. There obviously is enough to move forward so that the committee can begin to meet. And then we can continue to search for candidates and, and maybe have Mr. Estrada in at a, at a subsequent meeting.
I'd like to do that.
Good idea?
Yep.
Yes. I agree with that.
Okay. Uh, now, terms. You got some ideas for us?
I do. Are you all set with Mr.? Do you want to include Mr. Wood?
We did.
Yes.
So, um, what I have, um, and subject to consideration by the board, is that, um, Ms. Conley, Mr. McKay, and Ms. Reynolds would be appointed for three-year terms. Mr. Robbins, uh, Ms. Bartolini, and Mr. Balacchia would be appointed for two-year terms and Mr. Wood would be appointed for a one-year term.
That's fine.
That works for me.
That works for me.
Thoughts?
Could we ask, uh, Ms. Reynolds if she's, would like to have a three-year appointment since she's here?
Yeah. I mean, there's a number of members here. If anyone has an objection to that, please let us know and we'll... Any objection? Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you. Claire Reynolds, 104 Main Street, current member of the EDC. One of the things that we did was, we kind of took a straw vote at one of our previous meetings and said, um, who would like to be appointed to stay on for the individual terms, knowing that it was going to be, um, uh, divided up, so to speak? Okay. Staggered is the word I'm looking for. Um, so, uh, thank you for, I guess I won the draw for the three years. I don't know if that's a winning.
Win for the town.
I guess the, the thing is, is, um, that one option would be to ask the members, because they know what their commitments are. And I guess the other option would be that if somebody is appointed to a longer term than they can commit to, then they can just resign and you deal with it from there.
I think that is correct. Is that not correct? So, so maybe we go with what we have.
Yep.
Well, I was just going to, were there any major differences in your straw poll compared to what we have come up with here?
You're not asking that question, are you?
Okay. Fine.
So...
I, I have to be honest. I, I did say that I would vote, I think there, at the time, there was one slot for the one-year term and, um, I raised my hand right away. Um, so that was...
Maybe you do the first year of your three-year term and see how it goes.
There you go.
Um, well, so it sounds like there is some flexibility.
Well, we could have Mr. Wood take the three-year term and Ms. Reynolds the one-year.
Do a swap.
Make that trade.
Yeah.
Right. I won't tell you what he just told me, but...
He wants the one-year too? I want it, I got it.
I said if she wanted me to do the one-year term case, I'm terrible. I'm fine with that.
He was looking at it as, as a trial, but it's not really.
Um, would you rather do that? Would you rather do the one?
Yes. I, I would. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Wood, would you be minimal to the three? There it is.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. So move.
So then, the two new people would have one-year terms each? The, the remaining two?
Yep.
To fill the nine?
Two, yes. The two remaining would be one-year positions, correct?
Correct. And, I'm sorry. Is this, these terms go until June 30th? Well, so they're through, through the next appointing period? So the one-year term theoretically goes until the end of June 2018? Is that the way they're going to work? Or is it a year from now?
I'm looking at Mrs. Hale.
So these appointments, would they then be concurrent with the remainder of the, uh, appointments for committees in town? So the one-year term? Yes. So, so the one-year appointment would be through June 30th, 2018?
Because the board then does all their annual appointments, you know, during the months of May and June. We don't advocate for anyone off cycle. We can avoid it.
So, so the one-year appointment's going to actually, I'm sorry, one-year appointment's actually going to be eight months?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, uh, now, is there an option for a Board of Selectmen to be a member of that committee?
That is, that is the board's discretion. I know you keep trying to say, who's going to be the Selectmen's rep? There is no Selectmen's representative anymore on this, so...
But is that, could that be one of the slots?
It's up to, it's up to you if, if there's a board member that you would like to sit on this. Um, I don't know whether this is a discussion that you want to wait until you have a full board to see. I mean, you can put that discussion off until November 8th at least?
Well, I, I attend all of them, basically all of them. Every time I'm in town, they're at 7:45, uh, they're here. Um, they're great discussions, uh, with great, you know, volunteers and, 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 you know, I enjoy doing it. I've done it for a while. Um, I know there may be others who would enjoy doing it, Ms. Brockio. Uh, but there might not be. I don't know. Your thoughts? Is anyone, if we were to appoint a member of the Board of Selectmen, would anyone like to be that person?
I'd like to... I'm sorry. Go ahead, Bonnie.
I'll pass on that.
All right.
My only problem with this, actually, it's, it's twofold, is their meetings are the same as the Council on Aging and I've been going to the Council on Aging meetings for over a year. So there's a conflict that I've come to the EDC and then I have to leave because they're 7:45 and Council on Aging is 8:30. They're both on the same Fridays. That's my conflict. I wouldn't be able to fully participate if I did it.
Okay.
Um, I still like to attend the meetings and be a part of the meetings, um, but I don't know if I'm the best choice to do that.
Okay. Mr. Shea?
So I have only been able to attend one or two, uh, meetings to date. Uh, again, the times that they have on Friday mornings at that timeframe, I work in Burlington, it's more often than not a conflict with my work schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for that reason, I'm frequently not able to attend. Um, I would also note that I'm the one that has the least, uh, amount of time left in their term as well. So they may be, may be better served. Uh, certainly as this committee restarts under the new charge under the bylaw, to have a select person with a longer term remaining to, uh, to be appointed.
So, and I believe, if memory serves, I think the EDC would like to have a Board of Selectmen member. Is that, Claire, is that your? Um, okay. And I'm happy to continue to serve as, in, in that capacity if the board would like me to. If not, we can leave those final two spots open to others if we get other volunteers, so...
I, I, I'm comfortable reappointing you for the continuity of it. I don't wanna sound like I'm not interested in it, but I attend the ADA meeting and CHOPSY meetings in there in the morning as a representative of the board, so.
I, I would agree.
I'm comfortable with that.
I would, uh, subject to a successful interview, I would also be supportive of that.
And I will still be attending again until I leave to go to the other meetings.
All right, is there a motion? Cause I won't make it.
So, the one thing, the one thing I would suggest, to just, given, um, I think what Mr. Shea had just said, that if the board is going to put a member of this board on that committee, that you endeavor for it always to be the one-year seat.
Oh.
Okay? Given, you know, given the turnover and everything and that, it's probably better for the one-year seat. And that way, you can always switch things, you know, you can switch things up if you, if you so choose.
And how many one-year seats are there?
There's two, right now, there's two one-year seats available.
Claire has one, and this one would go to the Board of Selectmen member.
Correct.
Okay.
And then there's one other one.
Ms. Reynolds?
If I may, the, the question that, this is a really very basic question. If the terms are, have been three years, aren't you just picking the one-year and two-year people just to get that staggered? So essentially, it's an initial one-time thing that you're doing it. And then after that, it'll be a three-year term? You, you see what I'm saying?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, we just have to set the, right, you're correct. We have to set the initial, and then after that, it's just gonna be three people every year.
Yeah, it was really more from my understanding than yours. Thank you.
We're overcomplicating it.
All right, is there a motion?
I will move, uh, to appoint Selectmen Kalinda, uh, for one of the one-year appointments on the EDC.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so that's the EDC. Next, we move to, just going in order.
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, next you have, uh, the, the ad hoc St. Mark's Golf Course Conservation Restriction Working Group. Um, all of the, um, representative groups have provided, um, members of their committee. Conservation Commission Representative is Ben Smith. Uh, Open Space, um, is, Representative is, is Freddie Gillespie. Recreation Representative is David Candela. And the Golf Course, uh, Committee Representative is Andre Fortin. Edward Pearson is the only person who put in for the at-large rep. We're looking for somebody who was in a butter of the course. If you remember, this board interviewed and put Mr. Pearson on the Master Plan, uh, Committee, Golf Committee. Uh, I know that, um, Ms. Brachio served, um, with him. And, um, you know, I wouldn't put her on the spot to speak to his candidacy, but I think that the board is familiar with him, um, so.
I think he would be a wonderful fit. He took part in all the meetings, um, being the diverse group that we were for the, um, Golf Course Master Plan Committee. I think he did a great job. His input was valuable, and, uh, I think he would be the perfect person for this.
All right, so we have enough abrogants for the open spots and no additional ones.
Correct.
Uh, and, and if memory serves, so this, this, um, committee will serve, and what's the term?
It serves, uh, through January 1st, 2018.
Okay, and they're gonna provide input to Town Council?
They're gonna provide input to Town Council and Special Counsel.
And Special Counsel.
And Special Counsel, so that, uh, they can then take that information and craft, uh, the conservation restriction and begin to work with the state to finalize that for the, uh, for the July 1.
So there, there, there are no, uh, real estate, uh, attorneys in this list, I, I don't believe, so.
I don't believe so.
And so, they'll provide whatever guidance they can in, in their non-legal capacity to our legal team? Okay.
I, I, I think it was Ms. Gillespie that said that this isn't rocket science, so. I mean, they, 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 they know what, they know what they're doing.
Then if they don't need it until, you know, January, even better.
They can put this together, and I think, and, and obviously, um, uh, uh, Town Council and Special Counsel from McGregor, uh, from McGregor's law firm are, um, and, uh, and the Conservation Administrator are ex officio, who can sit with these meetings and help to try and, and, and guide and work on this. So it's not as if the committee is just gonna be taking their information, doing their work, and then giving it fresh to, um, to the legal team to put it all together.
And this legal team has done this before?
Yes, yeah. No, McGregor is very familiar. In fact, I think it was the recommendation of Open Space in terms that they've, that, you know, um, they've worked with McGregor's office before, you know, on these things. And they're very familiar with them. There was a gentleman that was in at a previous meeting with Town Council to talk about this.
Yeah, no, I, I'm very confident in the firm that we've chosen. I'm very confident in, in Aldo, and I would move that we appoint the, uh, the members as provided in our packet. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, the Fayetteville Hall Disposition Committee, Mr. Purple?
Mr. Chairman, um, I, we have a five-member committees, a five-member committee, ad hoc. We have Kristen LeVault, who is the Recreation Commission Representative. Sajal Balakia, who is the EDC Representative. Rebecca Dean Rowe is the Historical Commission Representative. And CHOPSY has not yet provided a representative, um, to the committee. Kyle Dikubelis is the, um, the only, uh, at-large resident, uh, he lives on Central Street, uh, that applied. We did look to see to have somebody from that neighborhood. And, uh, I did, uh, ask if Mr. Dikubelis was here, uh, to speak to the board tonight. Does not appear that he is. He is the only person who, uh, who has applied, um, for that position.
Okay, so this, um, committee is, uh, we, if we appoint tonight, they, they can start, it doesn't, you know, we don't have to wait for the full committee, or do we have to?
No, at, at this point, they have enough.
Time is of the essence.
Exactly, they have enough, they have enough people to move forward, uh, with this, so you could...
And if memory serves, that Town, Town Meeting already gave the board direction as to what it should do with that property, which is sell it. And then, uh, if memory also serves, I and others, um, agreed that, uh, our preference would be to someone who would maintain the historical facade of the property, correct?
Correct, yep.
Yes, okay. And so this, um, committee then, uh, under those guidelines, would help with the RFP process.
That's correct.
And would not go, um, uh, further than what Town Meeting already authorized. Would not do less than what Town Meeting authorized. It would do exactly what Town Meeting authorized us to do.
Correct.
And it would, uh, okay, all right, um, I will...
So, one question, sorry. So, historical met last night, did they offer a name for that spot?
Rebecca, Rebecca Dean Rowe.
Of the, okay, I understand, I apologize.
Yeah, she is, I'm sorry, so, yes, they just met last night. I just got that from the Chairman, Mr. Hubley, uh, this afternoon. And so, uh, again, CHOPSY is the only, is the only, uh, outstanding.
Okay.
And we did not take action. We're down three positions, uh, three vacancies on our committee. One will participate, and then a name will be, will come forward for appointment.
Okay.
All right.
And their, so their 90-day term would begin when? Tonight?
Their 90-day term begins, you know, upon appointment.
Okay. All right, well, I will...
They have 10 days? How long do they have before they get appointed?
But at least the term of the committee itself will start tonight.
Correct. But if they do not get appointed, they're not gonna come before us to get reappointed.
That's correct. I mean, this is, right, this is, this is something that should be, I think, when the board put the charge together. Again, this falls into the, this is not rocket science. I think that the, um, uh, you know, the representatives on this have an idea of what maybe, you know, um, would, would work with the property. Um, you know, things that are important, if there are some needs that are not being, um, served. Again, we've got, uh, two parcels over there. You've got one parcel that was, you know, you, the town purchased at one point, demolished the house, because you're gonna, you'd need that property to, it helped to address a septic issue with Fayetteville Hall at some point. So, there's a discussion of, you know, do we consolidate those two parcels? Um, and how do we move forward with this? And I think the committee will be able to give us a little bit of clarity, some thoughts on, on moving forward at that aspect.
No, that's good. I mean, I don't wanna go back to Town Meeting and we haven't done anything with that property for another year. So, time is of the essence, so I would say we, uh, we vote tonight, the term starts tonight. And if they finish their work before 90 days, all the better. All right, so I would move that we, uh, vote to appoint the members as provided in our packet. And verbally, as stated by Mr. Purple, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finally, Recreation Commission, Mr. Purple?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, there were, um, uh, two candidates that we have for the Recreation Commission. Jennifer Hansen and Luisa Vargas. Ms. Vargas was real recent, I believe she came, uh, her application came in on October 7th. The Recreation Commission has not had a chance yet to, um, to vet her application. I know they, they have, um, with Ms. Hansen, and, uh, the Chairman is here this evening, if you wanted to hear from him, in terms of his, um, recommendation, you know, for appointment. However, um, I do believe Ms. Vargas is here, and Ms. Hansen is here. And, um, we did have, um, Shatiendra Sharma, who is not here. He had put in quite a while ago, uh, and was subsequently appointed to Trails. We did reach back out to see whether, you know, there was interest in, in the position. Did not hear back, but wanted to make sure we tried to cover all bases.
Okay.
It was early in the spring, so, uh, the board does have two candidates here this evening, uh, that you can interview for the position.
Okay, and as one vacancy, we have two candidates here, correct?
Correct.
Ms. Vargas, welcome. You're in the front row, you get to go first. Oh, right here?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi.
Please state your name and, uh, address, and then your interest in the position.
Yeah, my name is Luisa Vargas. I almost knew you in Sarboro, I just have one year. I moved with my family from Dominican and Puerto Rico to here. I work in Mary Finn School, like, uh, ADA Special Near T-shirt and Support. I'm a student denied, um, in neuromuscular therapy. And I like recreation, because I worked in recreation before in Dominican Republic. And all about activities, coordinator activities, um, support, help in educations, and about communities. And I applied to, to the Trail and Conservation, because I'm a green person, and I'm a mommy, and I believe in community and live together in balance.
All right, thank you. Questions for Ms. Vargas? Um, Ms. Brachio, please.
Sure, um, I know you said you're new in town, welcome.
Yeah.
Have you ever served on a board or committee, uh, or commission since you've been in town?
No, in USA, in Dominican Republic. I worked before in commission and public service.
Okay, wonderful, and just one final question. I see you had listed, um, a few different committees and commissions on your, um, application. If you aren't selected for Recreation, would you still be interested in serving on a vacancy that's on some of these other boards, committees, or commissions?
Well, I'm interested in being able in the community, and to know more, to learn more.
Yeah.
I'm developing my second language in English. I just have 11 months learning English.
You're doing great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I really like to work with people and the green and all the preservation too.
So say, for instance, the Trails Committee, I noticed that you put that down.
Yes.
And there is a vacancy on that as well.
Yes.
Would you be interested if you aren't able to serve on Recreation and possibly serving on that commis, Committee, because there is a vacancy there as well?
I'm in Sarboro family, I just want to hold my family.
Wonderful, thank you very much, and thank you for stepping forward.
You may have other questions?
You may have others, sorry.
Sorry. Yes.
I, I know you're interested in serving on this committee. Have you attended any of their meetings to see what?
Yes, uh, two of them, uh, in the past. One of the, when we bought about the, uh, some mark, uh, bit land we take for conservation. And the other one, uh, was, uh, the house, the, some, uh, developed, want to come and buy house, um...
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, develop house here. And we decide, you know, we have to preserve that historic house there, nice, um, whatever. Yeah, that too.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Another question?
Yeah, none here, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Ms. Hansen?
Hello?
Hi there.
Hi.
So, your name and your interest, uh, and why you're interested in the, um, in the commission?
Okay, uh, Jen Hansen, uh, 14 Richards Road. So, I've actually been in town for almost 11 years now. And about four years ago, started getting more involved with the town and learning more about how, like, the town government works. I joined the Arts Council, and have been the Chair on that for the past four years. I have two young boys, and so we're just starting in the school district. I've got a first grader. And I joined the SOS when he started kindergarten and got really involved with fundraising and the town and all the events. And that's when I actually got a lot more involved with the Rec Department. So I've been, um, been helping fundraise for the play, the Finn Playground. So working really closely with the Rec Department as, like, an advisor to our group, trying to figure out how to raise that money and how to go about actually getting a new playground in there. So that's where I became really close and getting to know all of them. I've also been involved with them through the Arts Council, where we've been able to grant a bunch of, um, funds to help, uh, the summer nights, and also for the, um, like, summer concert series throughout the summer. So the Arts Council helped fund that and helped volunteer to run that. So, and we also, we participate in everything in the sports, starting with, like, T-ball when my son was four years old, and now playing soccer and stuff like that. So it's more, it's an opportunity to, to give back to all the events that we attend and all the things we participate in. So I've been looking for another way beyond the Arts Council to get involved in town. And this one kinda felt like a natural fit for our interests and what we take advantage of in town.
Thank you, questions, or we'll start with Ms. Fannin?
I'm all set, you have the time, obviously. You have the time to commit.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Ms. Brachio?
Have you attended any of the Recreation meetings?
Yes, I have, um, especially around the, uh, the Fayetteville Playground. And attending those meetings and be able to coordinate the Finn Playground with that one as well.
Can I offer a suggestion?
Please.
If I may, I know that the Chair of Recreation is here. I don't know, seeing as he hasn't had the opportunity to really have a conversation, I would assume, with Ms. Vargas. Do you have any questions that you may find useful being the Chair of Recreation? Is that out of line?
No.
Okay. Before I do that, um, I just didn't know, uh, Mr. Schifrin, if you might have some questions that might be useful as well? Thank you.
Thank you, uh, good evening. Brian Schifrin, Recreation Commission. I don't have any questions for the candidates, just, um, timing-wise, we, at our, a previous meeting, we evaluated Ms. Hansen's application, and, um, I would just urge the board to approve her appointment. I don't see any reason why Ms. Vargas, in the future, couldn't be on that committee. I think there will be spots in the near future, one way or another. And Recreation currently has a lot of things going on that we seem to meet relatively frequently and are having trouble, uh, with a quorum with our open spot. So I think all of that together, um, I would just ask the board to approve the candidate before you that the, the Recreation Commission has already, um, discussed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I think you spoke very well about your accomplishments. Actually, both candidates have spoken very well about, and I think both would be excellent additions.
So, I'll, I'll, I don't have any questions, I, uh... I don't have any questions, I, I do have an idea, um, if the board would be willing, if the candidates would be willing, uh, that we appoint Ms. Hansen, uh, to the Recreation Commission. We do have an appointment, uh, a vacancy on the Trails Commission. We could also appoint Ms. Vargas tonight to that. It sounds like she was willing to do that. And I think we could, um...
That'd be great.
Have two new volunteers in town, Ms. Fannin?
May I also suggest CHOPSY has vacancies, the ADA Committee has vacancies, and maybe Ms. Vargas would like to consider all of her options.
So let's start with these.
That's perfect.
I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Absolutely.
Aye.
Well, thank you and welcome to both of you to these.
Thank you very much, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schifrin? All right, um, Mr. Purple, what do we have next? We have a discussion...
We have the continued discussion regarding the notice of intent to sell, uh, for 135 Deerfoot Road.
All right. Do you have anything to offer on that, or are we gonna just continue our own discussion?
So there was a, um, there was a packet of information, uh, that was on your table that I received about 4:30 this afternoon. Ms. Gillespie and I have been, um, missing each other and, 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 uh, communicating electronically, um, back and forth on this issue. There is, um, and I don't know, I, whether you want me to speak to your information, or you prefer to speak to your own information? Packet of, the packet of information that you gave me, that I've made copies for everyone? I will say, I will say, as, as, as she's coming up, I did attach some additional information we have since, um, the previous, uh, meeting. Uh, well, I believe at the last meeting, you had already received the letter from the Planning Board, um, supporting the town, the Selectmen exercising the right of first refusal and bringing this to Town Meeting. You, uh, had a letter, uh, yesterday, uh, from Solf, um, with the same, uh, sentiment. You did have a letter, um, from, um, uh, Community Preservation, uh, Southboro Community Preservation Committee, um, from, um... I'm sorry, it was to Southboro Community Preservation from Mr. Hubley as, as Chair of Southboro Historical, to, um, do, take whatever action could be done to save the house and barn on the property. And then the historical... And then the Historical Society, Mr. Wyshen submitted a letter to that same intent to save the house and barn on the parcel.
Okay, and then, before we begin with Ms. Gillespie, so the, just to get us back on track. So the property is, is available. And the town, if we so chose, could bring this to a special town meeting and ask the voters if they wanted to, to pay for it. And the price point is what again?
1.9 million dollars.
So about $2 million to buy it. And then, so, or it could, or we could waive that right of first refusal. And the, is it Brendan Properties?
Yes.
Is looking to build some homes
Correct.
On that property, and the owner would sell to them.
That's correct.
Okay. And so we received some letters in support of taking it to town meeting to buy. And I'll be interested to hear what the other members have received for feedback. I have received a lot of feedback myself on how, you know, where's the money coming from? You know, do we have an extra $2 million to spend on the property? You know, what are we foregoing if we were to buy this? You know, in terms of taxes that would be coming in from those properties? If we have an extra $2 million, is this the, you know, the best use of that $2 million? I haven't heard from our schools yet. I haven't heard from members of advisory. If we, I didn't know we had $2 million, but maybe we do. We have, we just spent $27 million on a public safety facility. I know that we have a lot of capital equipment that we didn't buy last year that we have to buy this year. So I'll be curious to know how we would come up with the money and, or if the town can really even afford it. But I would love to hear from members, but Ms. Gillespie, you've been there for a little bit, so.
So, let me just, just before we sell, let me just kind of round the corners a little bit on a couple of those things. At the previous discussions we've had about this, I think it was the general consensus of at least the board, that if we're looking to do this, it is going to have to come from CPA funding. And Ms. Gillespie can speak to, there was some information that was provided to you. Mr. Ballantyne prepared a chart. Ms. Gillespie prepared a chart. The numbers are a little bit different, but the sentiment is the same, as the CPC can support, you know, this, this issue, should you choose to go that way. And that was, I think that was really all that I wanted to offer, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Gillespie.
Hi, I'm Freddie Gillespie, the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, commonly called the CPC. And we had a meeting last Thursday where we discussed this. And first of all, for the funding for it, which was your main concern, the Community Preservation Act monies can only be spent on specific uses allowed under the CPA. Therefore, we're not taking it away from schools, police, or fire because we cannot spend it that way. This is not an extra $2 million. It would need to be bonded. And our committee has always carefully looked at our budget. We've looked ahead. We've looked at what we know is coming our way when making recommendations to town meeting on what they would vote on. CPA is always a town meeting vote, but it has to go through our process to get to town meeting. And we're aware of all the different categories, which are open space preservation, historic preservation, community housing, and recreation. So we try to have, our committee is made up of representatives of the Conservation Commission, the Open Space Commission, Recreation Historical, I might be saying some twice, the Southborough Housing Authority, Shopsey, and we have two at-large members. At our last meeting, we had representatives from all of those board. We're a nine-member board. We had eight members there. The Housing Authority member wasn't there. We had a detailed discussion, and each member discussed what their representative board had had a meeting or not, and what their feeling was. And that is in the memo here, but I'll just run through it quickly. Andrew Mills from the Planning Board said the Planning Board had met and recommends exercising the right of first refusal. Open Space Preservation Commission met and recommends exercising right of first refusal to preserve the priority open space as part of the joint CPA use project. Shopsey, Brian Schifrin, said Shopsey recommends exercising the right of first refusal for some amount of community housing. The Recreation Commission, Dan Kalenda is the rep. They recommend exercising right of first refusal for passive recreation as part of a joint project.
Who's the rep on that?
Dave Kan. Did I say it wrong?
Mr. Kalenda.
Oh, well, Dan. I don't know. Sorry. The Conservation Commission, Benjamin Smith is our rep. He said that they were waiting to see if they could walk the property before taking a vote. But at their last meeting, their discussion was favorable to protect many conservation values on the property, including a floodplain and upland habitat to wetlands. They didn't take a vote, but they'd had a meeting and discussed it and were hoping to walk the property and then be able to really make a better recommendation. So that is consensus in favor was reported to my committee, but not a vote. The Historical Commission, Kate Madison is the rep. And they didn't meet until last night, so at our meeting, we didn't have a letter. But Kate described many historical values of the property. And I believe you've since gotten a letter from them as they met last night. Tim Martell and Mark Murphy are also on the committee. And we voted unanimously to vote to move forward. Sally Waters and Deb Costine were in attendance. They're board members of the Southborough Open Land Foundation and the Southborough Historical Society. They provided testimony that Solf had met and recommended the town purchase the property for open space as part of a joint-use CPA project. And additionally, the Historical Society recommends the town purchase the property to preserve the historic home and barn. Selectwoman Bonny Fannin was also in attendance. So we had all those recommendations, but we still needed to look at the finances. And the spreadsheet that is attached, and I apologize somehow, the decimal points got a little out of whack because they weren't supposed to be there. But what we had done with, Brian had put out, we have a bond for 87 Main Street, I mean, for 84 Main Street, excuse me, for $970,000. We also, he did a schedule of what that will be. And he also did a projection of what the 1.9 mil would be. And then, you total those two together. What I had done a little bit differently, and then I sent these numbers to Brian, was he had just taken what our surcharge was. So we can only bond against the surcharge. That's the amount the town takes in. We get a match from the state, which is not guaranteed. But we feel for the foreseeable future, it's going to be around 20%. When you did the surcharge, Brian gave me the number he anticipates for fiscal year 19 at $338,000. I went through 12 years of data and took the difference between the next year and the prior year, added that all together and divided by 12 to come up with the average, which was 3.8% increase annually. I sent that to Brian. He agreed. He said I was going with a 3% increase. And he said that 3.3% would be a still very conservative estimate of how fast our surcharge could grow. So that's why my projection's a little different. So we add the two together, subtract the bond amount from what we anticipate to receive, and come up with our surcharge. And then we are only bonding at 65% of the surcharge because we have to put the percentages in the respective buckets. And we don't know which use it would be right now. And I'll get to that in one minute and try to hurry this up. Anyhow, so this shows, without using any of the specific allocated, what we call buckets for the uses, that in four years, we start having money accumulate again. In addition to, the buckets would still be there and the search, the state match. Which means we financially can afford to do this because we have the money to cover the years. We're not at 65% right now in our, in our accounts. So we, so we, we found we could do it. It does make us very tight. So this has to be a pretty important project. And we felt with the input from all the boards and committees that it was. Additionally, we had, before this meeting and looked at it, we had gotten all the applications for this year. We'd gone through that and seen that we could all pay all of those and have some placeholders for some expected expenses coming in that weren't in applications. And that this here is above and beyond spending for those. If we, we haven't gone through that application process, but we have that amount of money if we so decide to move that for annual town meeting. So none of our projected projects or ones on the table we know about would not be able to be funded in order to do this.
This year or for the next four years? You mentioned four, you looked out four years? You'd be tight for the next four years, is that right?
We'll be tight for, I mean, a long time, but I'm saying, what is in the application for right now, for this year, we can fund. And then we'll have some money available in the future years. The other thing
Did you project, sorry to interrupt, did you project any money for the golf course itself?
I think I have a little bucket for that. I mean, they haven't
Or magnitude?
Well, here's, here's the thing. Every year, we ask for people to come and tell us what they need. I've spoken with the golf course committee, or before there was a committee, members supporting the golf course, members who were going to be appointed. Do you need to come to CPA for money? And we haven't, you know, we can't, we can't hold back money for when people don't talk to us, so.
So you said, yes, you have a little bucket for them?
No, they haven't talked to us, told us they needed it.
I thought you said that, yes, you had a little bucket.
I have some, we have some money, and I'd have to go back to see what we put there. I, you know, guesstimate, you know?
So, okay, go ahead, Ms. Schifrin.
Order of magnitude, you know, is it like a $10,000 bucket? Is it a $200,000 bucket?
I'd have to go back and look because I really don't know. But I want to finish one part of this.
Okay.
That, this is just straight bonding. One of the things we really talked about was, and we know the town does not want to hold on to any buildings at this point in time, that we don't have a municipal need for, especially older ones. The goal is, with the beautiful historic home, and I believe the barn is historic as well, to subdivide it off the property, put a preservation restriction on it. Once you have a buyer, because you don't want to put a preservation restriction and not be able to sell it, but you do want to be able to preserve some of the historical attributes of the building, and then resell it. Depending on how fast you can do that, and at the right price, you can do it faster than, the lower the price, the faster you can sell it, right? But we can afford to sell it. We had some numbers throwing out. We didn't think it was unreasonable to think we would get $500,000 at a minimum. I believe the house was on the market for over a million at one time. We know that putting a preservation restriction lowers the value. But typically, a preservation restriction, especially if you're not restricting anything on the interior, and we would not do this to make it prohibitively restrictive, is the goal. But I mean, that won't come along until you have the discussion. Is that typically, a historic preservation restriction limits the value by 5% to 20% at the most. Whereas a conservation restriction on land, because you're restricting the real value of developing the land, is usually at 80%. So putting the restriction on it shouldn't restrict it as, you know, lower the price that much over the market rate. That money comes back into the CPA accounts, whether we get it done before we go to bond or whether it just is there for future use. We didn't think $500,000 was unreasonable at a minimum, given the beauty of the home. And it's probably really selling it short. We have no knowledge, but I'm just saying. If you looked at the house and you looked at, we had somebody in real estate who thought that, you know, certainly that was not unreasonable. Additionally, we have over $200,000 in the CPA Affordable Housing Account. There's a way you can leverage that. So what we talked about was just, if you can use that money, that's another, that money's just been sitting there growing with no, no plans to use it at all. And you don't have to build affordable housing at the time. So what Selectman Fannin suggested last time, and we looked into it, and I did the research with the Community Preservation Coalition, is that you purchase the land using, just for the general CPA purposes, which is what's in our draft warrant article. And then what happens is, after you do that purchase at town meeting, and the land is restricted, it can only be used for CPA uses, but there can be no CPA uses until you come back to a subsequent town meeting and define exactly what you want to do. Because then the land is restricted, either you have, if it's for open space, you have to put a conservation restriction on that portion. If it's for community housing, you have to put a housing restriction on that portion. If it's for the historic preservation, which is one of the first things we would probably do at next town meeting, is sell that portion of the land and, with a preservation restriction on it. So what happens there is, as we discussed, would be, and the CPC already authorized up to $8,000 for the Selectmen to use for land use, working with us and all the groups, to come up with a land use plan. Again, recreation only for passive recreation, open space, historic preservation. You have that plan, which then goes to the town to be voted on. When I spoke to the Coalition, they said the one problem with doing that for community housing was that the land was restricted for community housing, but it never got built 10 years later. But it's just sitting there, and that actively, actually acting as if it was open space until the town came up with a plan and the voters voted to approve what was proposed. So given all that, we unanimously voted to recommend to the Selectmen to move forward with exercising your right of first refusal.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gillespie. Ms. Fannin?
A great recap, but I interpreted some things a little differently. And the draft has not been approved by the CPC. This article, draft?
The draft has been in a very rough form, reviewed and conceptually approved. And I was given permission to fill in a couple of blanks, which I did, to present to the Selectmen for tonight's meeting, for you to have, to have our Town Council review. Because certainly, the complexity of the legal requirements of this type of warrant article are, you know, believe it or not, above my legal capacity.
Come on.
I mean, I did pretty darn tootin' good, but we certainly want legal counsel and the Selectmen to weigh in. We're not certain, the, we put in the multiple purposes of the, sorry, multiple purposes of the Community Preservation Act. And then we put in that we would have the land use consultant to develop a plan to come back at future town meetings. I'm not sure if that's a requirement in a, in a warrant article. But it seemed, the committee felt it was good to give the citizens a level of confidence that they would have a vote on whatever else happened on that property.
Can I follow up with what my questions were? The 1.9 million, I did ask if an appraisal was going to be done on the property. And I don't know where that stands, or if this board feels that it's necessary. We've done it in all of our purchases on all properties in this town. I don't know why we wouldn't ask for an appraisal of the property. There's, walking away from the CPC meeting the other night, there was one thing that really concerned me about purchasing the property and trying, and attempting to sell a piece of that property, the homestead. If it's not sold immediately, after all of the work and going back to a future town meeting, to sell that piece of property, the home on the property, who's going to maintain the home, pay for the insurance, and pay for anything that needs to happen during that interim period? Where are those funds going to come from? If we're going to replenish CPC, where do we get the funds? Back to what Mr. Kalenda was asking, not using town resources. Do we have to put that money in here?
I would say yes. We hadn't, you know, as you know, we didn't discuss that. You hadn't thought of it or hadn't brought it up.
I didn't think of it until after the discussion took place. That's why I didn't think of it until after the discussion took place. That's why I asked if this has been. Because we could sit on it until April of next year, if we move ahead, to decide what we're going to do with it. And then in that process of selling it, that could take months.
Well, as one member of the CPC, so I can't speak for the committee, because we did not discuss this, I would suggest that we write the warrant article a little bit differently so that we could, as soon as possible, section off the portion and put it to market, because that is the ultimate goal of that, protecting the home.
So-
It might be the goal, but it doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Right, but this doesn't allow us to do that without some language in there. And then we would need to vote some money to maintain it in the meantime. I also believe there's a tenant in there now, I mean-
That it's private property. I'm not interested in what's happening with it today, but what happens with the property once we take ownership of it.
Once we take ownership of it, that's, what I'm bringing that up is because we have to deal with that once you take ownership, and you can, you, that is an option to fund.
So there are a lot of questions still left to be answered. I'm not sold. I'd be curious to know what the other members are thinking. I'm also, I'd be shocked, Mrs. Shifrin's here, but in the next four years, Recreation would have no use for any CPC money whatsoever. Zero, no interest in things for the kids, no interest in recreation, new recreational or updates, no interest in a, what I've heard of for years, a, you know, an indoor facility for our kids.
We can't build indoor.
So, Mr. Shifrin?
Yeah, I mean, all of those things are on our radar in the near future. I believe up to now, that the items on our near future that could be funded by CPC funds have already been done. So, I'm not sure that, like Freddie was just saying, the indoor facility that we're thinking of doing. I don't think that could be done with CPC funds. Or that's part of the, the five or 10-year plan that we have. I don't think that could be done, anyway. I think that's why we moved forward with some of the projects that we recently did, because those, they were CPC projects and could be funded that way.
So those projects that required additional funding from donations by, you know, residents, including, I think the playground at Fayetteville and their updates at Finn, that's all being done from private donations, because?
The playground was funded with CPC funds, and then there were additional funds raised because the, because citizens, after the project was already planned and funded, wanted to make upgrades and changes to the plan that we had, which we weren't opposed to. And so we suggested if they could raise the funds, then we would be happy to do it.
And, but we couldn't have gone back to CPC to request those funds for those upgrades?
I guess we could have. The commission, I think they were purely extras or bonuses, or above and beyond what we already thought was a first-rate playground that was going to be there. So I don't think the commission felt it was necessary enough to go back and use more CPC funds. But if the, if the group that wanted those changes could raise the money, then we were on board.
All right. I don't still know how those, you know, residents would react to that, if they knew that maybe they could have gone back to CPC, but, but anyway, that's for another topic. But my, my point is, my query to you was-
Yeah.
There is nothing at all that Recreation will need in the next number of years.
I mean, I definitely, I can't say that. And if, if funds were available, they, there may be something come up that Recreation might identify. I mean, I can't say that there definitely wouldn't be.
Yeah.
And just to the point on the playground, it was a timing issue, too, where we already had the funds approved through CPC and were ready to start the project. The group that came to us was about, you know, a month before, a month and a half before we were starting the project. So if we were to go back just to do those upgrades that we didn't think were absolutely necessary, it would have delayed that project another year.
Okay.
So I, I think that was part of the reason, too, and I think everybody understood that at, at that meeting. You know, those people that were raising those funds, they, they understood why they were doing it.
Okay. All right, but so from your perspective, you don't know whether or not you would make a request for something four years out?
No, I mean, I, I can't say that there would definitely not be a recreational need in the future. I can't say that.
Okay. Thank you.
A follow-up, Brian. The playground at Finn School, to replace that playground, we couldn't use CPC funds?
Uh, no, because it was on school property.
The school could come forward, could they?
I-
I'm just asking. It's a follow-up to Mr. Kalunda's question.
I was told no, but I mean, I can let-
Okay.
And that's one of my challenges, that this, this will be so tight for the next number, it's a big buy. And, you know, $2 million is $2 million, whether or not it's coming from CPC, which is taxed, you know, the taxpayers pay for every year, or, or a different source, so. And my concern is, are we getting the best use of that money for this particular parcel off of Deerfoot? I don't know how many people traverse through that lot, you know, and would be actively using, or enjoying, or seeing the view of that for what we could be giving up. And we haven't even touched on the golf course piece yet, which is, to me, is a huge thing we got coming down the road. And if, and if members of that committee, which is actually part of, part of one, is newly formed tonight, but, you know, haven't come forward yet, I'd be shocked if they're not at your door tomorrow. You know, asking for, you know, to be, have that bucket as full as it can be, to make sure that that, which we've invested heavily in at last town meeting, remains in a state that can be usable by our residents and enjoyed by so many. Other questions?
Can I just ask, Brian, while you're up there, and Freddie, while you're up there. Looking back, say, even over the last two to three years, how much money out of the buckets has gone? I know the buckets are for affordable housing, the buckets are for recreation, they're for open space, and what's the other, am I missing a bucket?
No.
Okay, so, historical, thank you, I appreciate that. How much out of those buckets has gone to Recreation in the last, say, three years? I know there's been a lot of projects that have came forward. Do we have just an idea? I know the lights were, that came to town meeting. I'm just curious, just to-
First of all, Recreation doesn't have a bucket. Recreation was not an original part of community preservation project funding, allowable funding. It was adopted and added later when it was deemed to be required for many towns and cities who wanted it for, to adopt. So it doesn't have a set aside. It's considered an open space allocation, but it doesn't have its own bucket. And in the open space bucket, you cannot spend that for Recreation. Our committee has always been very cognizant of that, and has always made sure that Recreation had a big piece of our pie. And at the last town meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, we had extensive conversations with Recreation, given the the ticket price of some of the projects we had funded recently and were, you know, recommending for the town to fund. And we had been assured that this was sort of like their, you know, we always try to get what's coming down the road.
Yep.
And this was sort of meeting their, they had a plan, and for what, as Brian said, what they could fund out of CPA. We cannot fund active Recreation where there's any bleachers, indoor Recreation, any of those types of things, we can't fund. But, so like, if there's a field and there's bleachers, we can't fund the field. So, I mean, there's constraints on how you can spend the money. So we are confident that we had done very well by Recreation over the past few years, with all their foreseeable goals. They had a plan done, and they knew what they were looking for. Having said that, though, if you look at this, if you add the potential for $500,000 to $700,000 on top of what's here, we have a, you know, in the year one, we have in addition to 33,000, they say 34,000 in each bucket, and an additional 70,000 in state match that we are, can't guarantee, but pretty comfortable at a minimum, we should be getting, in addition to $700,000. It's not that we can't do other projects. And if there's, and I will get back to you with the numbers on the golf course. I think we had been told, we really don't know what is going to come in at. We're talking just, we can't do anything for the clubhouse. That's not a CPA allowable expense. We can't do the driveways or the parking lots, not an allowable. Irrigation, those sorts of things, and there had been talk originally that if we spent that out, just like you could do it in such a way that if there was income coming in, that that income could come back into the CPA to replenish what was going out. Not that that's a guarantee, but that was one of the discussions, so.
Freddie, if I may, just, just so I'm clear, so there are, there is still, there would still be money going into the buckets, irregardless of what the bond payments would be, if the town chose to go down this road and use CPA funds. There, the, the, the well wouldn't specifically dry up, that there would still be limited funds still required to go into the buck, I'm just trying to be clear on that. Into the buckets?
Okay, so, the first year-
Yep.
If you haven't defined a use for the land, when the bond is set. So, like, we haven't even set the bond yet for the Burnett House, so it's not like bonds get set right away. Hopefully, this would be sooner, but we cannot use any money out of any bucket until we define the use for the property. Because we don't know. You can't say historical, you know, you can't just make it up. You have to know. So, the only money we can spend on the bond until we define a use is the general unreserved. That's what's left over after you don't have a surcharge, I mean, after you put the money in the buckets.
Yep.
And it's also not including the state match, because you can't bond against the state match, because you don't know what it's going to be.
Okay.
So. And I did make one mistake on this chart, if you're looking at it. Well, it's not a mistake, it's just a different way of looking at it. If you see the 10% buckets? The 10% buckets, right? Yeah, the 10% buckets, there's a historical bucket there, right? We can use that because the 84 Main Street is all historical. So, 33,800 in year one is available in general unreserved. And the caveat is that Recreation doesn't have a bucket, so it has to be in general unreserved. So that 38,000's available, and so is the anticipated 67,000. So there's $100,000 that year.
Okay. Thank you.
So I, I would like to get an idea from our members, because we could probably have this discussion all night. I am not sold. I appreciate the analysis. I'm, I'm not sold. I'm, I would not be looking to bring this to town, a special town meeting to buy. Or I'd love to hear what other members are thinking.
Will we hear from the residents?
We, yeah, I'd like to get an idea of how long we should have the discussion going for tonight. If there's, if, if there's another vote that is similar, then okay. If it's three against one, or maybe it'll be, you know, 4-0, but I'm not, I'm not interested in buying. I mean, I'm, I'm interested to hear from others if they want to, but you know, we could have a discussion that could go on a long time on this particular topic.
I'm happy to share where I'm at, or?
I'll share where I'm at.
Go ahead, Bunn.
You want to go first?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I did attend the meeting, and I did speak at the meeting. Some of what came out of that meeting concerns me, as far as the responsibility of this board after we acquire the property and the home that's on the property, and what we might do with it. I, and looking at the draft here, I appreciate the language that you put in there, but what I was suggesting was that the plan be brought before CPC, and then back to town meeting for approval, not the individual projects. The 1.9, I don't think it's going to cover the expenses on maintaining that home as long as we have to, and the the effort of selling the home again, and the appraisals and everything that would be necessary for it. And I think Mr. Shea's concern with the golf course is probably one of the items I didn't think of, and probably the, should have been the first thought of mine, where town meeting was so supportive of the golf course and the purchase of that piece of property. I don't want to overlook that. And Fayetteville Village Hall, the Historical Commission is interested in Shop Z, and looking at Fayetteville Hall, to repurpose that, even for affordable housing. We haven't got that far yet. The committee was just formed this evening. So there are other buckets that we might dive in. And I know we have money in the historical fund, on the trust fund which we manage, but I think there's more obstacles here than I anticipated.
Mr. Shea?
So, I would echo that. I had made similar statements at our last meeting. I think that the timeline that was laid out to have in place, if I understood correctly, a warrant or an article at the next annual town meeting for how to, for what to do with the property, if we were to purchase it at a special town meeting now. I think that timeframe is extremely optimistic. It's taken us how long to dispose of Fayetteville Hall now? Like, to be able to have a plan in place and an article in place at the next annual town meeting is, it's an unrealistic timeframe. I mean, so the warrant, if, if you backtrack, the warrant is going to have to be ready middle of March. We're going to have to go through vetting and review of all the articles. The special town meeting isn't until late November, early December timeframe. It just leaves no time to put in place a plan to, to do something with that parcel. So I think more likely than not, we're looking at a year and a half of maintaining the property that our facilities department is going to have to undertake. Again, I see a lot of obstacles with this. The CP, I'm very concerned about the CPA funds, and particularly with the, the way that the state match has declined over the years. What started off as 100% match program, last year went to 17.7%. So for every dollar that went in from our tax money, the state contributed 17 cents rather than a dollar. So, very, and I just think that the town spoke loud and clear on the golf course property last year. And to be able to have to say to the town, well, you know, we don't have CPA funds available for the golf course because of this other project, I think that the project is just going to detract from the primary focus. Now, so that's personally where I am on this. What has been, you know, something that I've been struggling with from, from the beginning as well, is whether something this large, of this magnitude, is a decision made at this board, or, you know, despite my personal opposition to it, is it something that should go to a special town meeting? So that's, you know, I think it's two different things, but that's the struggle that I have with this.
Okay, Ms. Brock, you?
I have the same struggle to some degree, Brian. I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of people, as I'm sure we all have on this, and the, the people that I've talked to, there are, there is support for this. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions at this point, yes. My personal opinion aside, I think ultimately, it's the voters to decide what they want to do with this. I agree that that town meeting overwhelmingly supported the golf course. I just don't know what CPC funds could be used for the golf course. I don't believe it can be used, I think Freddie said tonight, to move the clubhouse. I would hate to, without, with the information I have here tonight, personal opinions aside, I, I, I do believe it's up to the voters to decide. So I could go on, but I'll just, short and sweet, I'll leave it at that.
So I will make a motion myself. So the voters elected us to make decisions from here, and I think this is one of those that we can make, whether or not we think this is in the best interest of the entirety of the town. And then being able to look out, not only just today, and what we have coming next year with the golf course, but years from now. I personally don't think it's in the best interest of the town to utilize these funds for this particular parcel of, of land, and I would, for discuss- And I would, for discussion, make a motion that we do not exercise our right of first refusal. Is there a second for discussion?
For discussion, a second.
Okay, all right. Thoughts?
Can I add something more? One of the things that I struggle with is we have a packet from our boards and committees and commissions that we rely on, and for them to come forward as they have and give their recommendations on this, I think we really need to seriously consider that as well. If there wasn't the overwhelming support that there was, it would make the decision for me a lot easier, but based on the jobs that they do and the advisory position that we put them in, or even the guidance position that we put them in, I think we need to take that into consideration.
You know, I will agree that, and their advisory, many of them are advisory to the Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
And I've read everything. I've taken, I take their advice. I would, I would, I would almost hope that folks from those particular boards and committees would be supportive of something like this. You know, if you're not an advocate of historical preservation, you probably wouldn't be on that committee, and, you know, and so, yeah, I would, I would expect that they would want to preserve things that are deemed, they deem historical. And then I'll take that advice, and what I do is say, "Okay, I appreciate it. Is this the very best use of that, those funds for the entirety of our town?" And I, I remain that I don't think it is, so. All right, other thoughts?
A question about the warrant article. The language in the warrant article can, article cannot be changed on town meeting floor, correct?
That's my understanding.
The dollar amount can't be changed on town meeting floor?
Um, yes, it can.
Down, but not up?
No, it can be changed by the CPC, but not by a resident except for down, I believe. I'll double check that. But, the price isn't going up for the right of first refusal. There should be, from what you're saying, investigation. I believe there's a week left or something into if more money is needed to maintain the home in the short term, and for, would be a separate warrant article.
The stewardship of the property.
Separate warrant article, though.
Belongs to the Board of Selectmen after we acquire the land. It's under our jurisdiction.
And?
Regardless of a plan or, or anything.
I believe you could put that into the CPC warrant article.
Well, I think anytime the municipality purchases a piece of property, it's under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen.
If you wanted to spend CPA funds on that as part of this project, you would come to the CPC and, you know, we would work together to come up with a separate warrant article to identify that. Wouldn't be in with the bond money, is what I'm saying.
No, I'm saying, once we acquire the land, whatever the dollar amount is, and whatever the purpose of the property will be decided at a future town meeting. In the interim, the property is under the stewardship of the Board of Selectmen since we own it.
Correct. Doesn't mean you can't use CPA funds to do that.
No, I'm saying it. But, it, any decisions made on that property in reference to the home comes from the direction of this board, correct?
Unless the warrant article to put a preservation restriction on it was voted by the citizens, I believe. But, I, that, you'd need an attorney, I'm.
I, I'm not trying to put.
That's what you're asking.
But, to me, this dra, it's a draft. I understand it's just a draft. It's very vague. I couldn't put my stamp on it as far as supporting it at a town meeting. I'm concerned, again, with the golf course. It's a decision for town meeting, but I, I.
So, can I just say, the draft of the warrant article was based on something given to me two weeks ago.
I understand that.
Research to the best of my ability, our committee discussed to the best of our knowledge to come back to you for your input, and not for you to put your stamp of approval on.
I'm giving my input. As it's written, I could not put my stamp of approval on this.
And neither would the CPC. We're looking for your input on it, and then, and then the town council's review. It wasn't a, you know, ever considered that you would expect us to have a final draft in?
When are we going to get a final draft? We have to post a warrant. That's, that was my concern with the meeting the other night. We need to have a final draft. It needs to be posted, if we have a town meeting, for the view of the public. So, when are we going to have that so all of the parties, advisory and everyone else can weigh in? We have to have a public hearing, correct?
No.
With CPC funds?
No. We would have a, we would have a public meeting. We don't have to have a quote "public" hearing that's posted for two weeks. So, we would never, all of our meetings are public, but.
Do you know the answer to that, Mark? A land purchase, do we require to have a public hearing?
Not sure that you're required to have a public hearing. Again, that kind of falls, the question you had asked about, you know, do we need an appraisal? You know, and, and the answer was, "No, we don't need an appraisal," but it's something. It's, it's up to the discretion of the board, and I think town council had, had used the term "good government" to look at something like that, so that's, that'd be to the discretion of the board.
Mr. Purple, what would be the, the timeframe and the date that we would have to open, close a warning? Where, where are we in the window of even considering getting this done?
So, you're still on the right side of the window. We talked about, in, in talking with the school, the town clerk, and the moderator, we're looking at that last week of November, week after Thanksgiving. You know, likely, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of that week.
What are the requirements?
You have to post, you have to post a, yeah, there we go. We have to post a warrant fourteen, at least fourteen days in advance of the meeting date.
Okay.
Calendar days.
Yeah.
Calendar days.
Count.
So, we don't, we don't need to back out Thanksgiving and?
Correct. So, you could, it's fourteen calendar days. So, you could, you know, at your next scheduled meeting on the eighth, you would pretty much have to.
Make a decision.
Well, not make a decision. You kind of have to make a decision at least how you want to move forward this evening. Because I think you would at least need a draft warrant. Does the board, if the board is going to call a special town meeting, are you going to open the warrant, put the article in, close the warrant, one article? Are you going to leave the warrant open, or, you know?
Yep.
Well, and citizens petitions usually come after that.
Oh, I understand, but it, and this is, like I said, and this is a lot. This is a lot to, you know, to, to try and get your hands around in a short period of time, but. So, on the November eighth meeting, or you'd have to have, you know, we may have to have a special meeting between now and then to kind of talk logistics if the board is, you know, wants to move forward on this issue.
All right, Mr. Shea. I remain, there's so many unanswered questions and, and, and the time constraints that we, I don't, and the golf course, folks haven't even begun to weigh in, but town meetings are weighed in on that, so.
Can I make a comment about the golf course? I mean, I'm just talking about the money. There is money there. I mean, we have over a million dollars without, in the house today, without any of this. So, it's not like there's not money that, we were given a price of maybe three hundred thousand dollars for, was bantered around. No, no, that was a conversation to me.
Someone did come to you.
No, a conversation heard in the, in the rooms when we were talking about this, that the irrigation, I've said, would it be a million, would it be three hundred, you know, what? So, there's, there's nothing on the table, so how can you say it's going to be how much? But, you know, three hundred thousand dollars, you know, we, we do have money in the accounts today. So, it's not like there's no, we, it's not like we didn't consider that there would be other projects coming up.
Again, I, I don't know how this particular parcel is, takes priority over what could be the, one of the biggest things we're doing in town. Mr. Shea? I mean, I'm, I'm a no vote.
Do we have any citizens?
Does any citizens want to chime in about this? We've heard from the pro-vote side, is there anyone who thinks we shouldn't be buying this?
I don't.
Ma'am, you want to?
I am, um.
Just your name, address, and?
Yeah, my name is Kathy Bartolini, and I'm at one eighteen Deerfoot Road, so I am in a butter of the property. And I think you've made perfect, um, just, just as far as like all of the downsides of purchasing the property for the, from the town. I mean, I'm not opposed to open space. It is a beautiful property, but I think that, as you had pointed out, as a town, we voted for the golf course. We have a huge municipal complex that's supposed to be coming up, and to ask the town to come forward again, and just like you said, and said, "Oh, just kidding. We need another two billion dollars." And, again, who is going to take care of it? As people on that street, as you said, it's a, I don't know how many really have gone up the road. We're a little tiny, nobody knew about this end of Deerfoot Road until all this came about. So, um, the preservation of the property, I mean, I know that the facilities from the town would have to be responsible for it, but it's a big property. So, you're talking a lot of funds to be able to have to take care of it, as you said, in the interim timeframe of when it could be sold. And as much as it is, you know, a beautiful property, it's historical, I appreciate all of that, it's, there's going to be a lot of work to that. So, the funds are not just the one point nine million dollars at the get-go. It's all of these other expenses that you're going to be, or the town is going to have to be looking at. And as you said, it is going to take away from other projects that the town is already, has thought about. So, that's my piece.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others? Mr., Mr. McKay?
Good evening, Chairman Selectmen, members of the board. I'm Dave McKay, sixty-one Presidential Drive. I'm also the chair of the Economic Development Committee, but I'm speaking entirely on my own behalf on this issue. My only, I, I, I sort of, I am sensitive to the concerns that have been raised by the selectmen and others in terms of the cost. My, my only concern about this is really the opportunity cost associated with this. I, I understand that this is not going to completely hamstring us, but it's going to hamstring us quite a bit. And in the last, just in the last couple of years, we've had two unanticipated projects that, that came before us that were CPC or open space related. And, and I'm an advocate of the town acquiring rights to open space. I think we should do that when we have the opportunity to do so. However, for this particular property, I'm concerned about the opportunity cost that we're going to have for not being able to do something like the Burnett House two years from now on something that might come up that we, we would love to have been able to do, but we've acquired this other property kind of in its stead. And so, you know, I leave it, I, I don't have the strongest of feelings as to yea or nay whether we should buy this particular property, but, you know, if, if I had a choice and, and I was choosing between the Burnett House and this particular property, or if I was choosing between, you know, some aspect of the golf course or the golf course property and this Deerfoot Road parcel, you know, I, I think that's a, that's a fairly straightforward consideration. So, I'll leave sort of the finances to others who are much smarter than, than I to figure out, but I, 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 I hope that we're going to, you know, I, I would like us to preserve the flexibility so that we can, you know, purchase other open space properties or other recreational projects or whatnot in the future to the extent they come up.
Thank you, Mr. McKay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Hello, Janet Maney, twenty-one Skylar Drive. I'm not directly abutting the property, but people from our whole neighborhood cut through my yard to walk down the driveway and use this property. It's been open space, you know, everyone walks their dogs, walks around Crystal Pond. It's been that way for decades. My, I, I really feel that the town should make a decision like this. You, Mr. McKay mentions that we'd like to have money available for another Burnett House if it comes up. Well, this is a Burnett House that's come up. It is a historical property. It does need work. You know, maybe we would have the same kind of luck and find someone else who's willing to, you know, really restore the property correctly. But whether we do or not, if we put a conservation restriction on, if we sell it, it's not the town's responsibility, and we've protected that. The other concern I have is that the, there's a, a lot of undeveloped land in that whole area. The Bartolini's own, a lot at the top of our street, which they've always wanted to connect to either Fairview or Banfield or Deerfoot. There's a housing lot, and then there's another seven acres, I think. Then there's EMC Dell land, and if someone put pieces of these together, they could have another Park Central in this area with three different roads of access through existing neighborhoods. You know, we can't, if we don't take this property, we have no control over what could happen. And there's a ton of undeveloped land up there. It's just asking for development. We, I know that the builder has said that he plans on putting a few individual houses up there, but we have no control over that. If we could get that in writing, that might help. The other part is that there's the house and the property behind it of about twenty acres. And then there's five or six or seven acres on the other side of Deerfoot, which goes up a slope to where the town is looking at putting in the water tower. I don't, he's talking about putting houses there. I can't imagine that he can make very good money on those houses with the house, with the water tower, a potential that's out there. That would be overlooking this land. So, I, the, the plans that I hear for the land don't make sense, and the questions that are out there are enormous. So, I would recommend that we take a little more time to look at it and have the town decide.
All right, any other comments? Mr. Schifrin?
Brian Schifrin, seventy-nine Oak Hill Road. I, I just had some personal comments. When I saw this come up, I always thought it needed to go to a town vote because of my involvement with some larger things on committees, like the nine eleven field, the Burnett House, and the Fayetteville Playground that came up tonight. We don't really get the community outcry or, or support or opinion until the shovel's in the ground or the bulldozer's there, that type of thing. And, I, I mean, I'm not, nothing against that community. I, I think it's just the, the natural way things happen. That, and I think it's very difficult for this board to know what the community wants as a whole at this age in the game, because I think clearly based on some recent projects, people don't come out when there's just public notices of a Board of Selectmen meeting or a recreation meeting, or there was a "for sale" sign in front of the Burnett House for, you know, how long, and, and it wasn't really a big deal. So, those are the reasons that I just really thought, given the size of this parcel and the, the, you know, infrequency that something of that magnitude would come available, that it, it just needed to go to a, a town vote. And then, you know, everyone at that meeting will hear everything that the town has to deal with, golf course, public safety, whatever, and can make that vote. And I just think that's a more appropriate way of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schifrin. Okay, seeing none, nothing else. So, and I will, just to piggyback on what Mr. Schifrin is saying, I think if we did do this, again, timing is interesting. Right after Thanksgiving, it'd be interesting to see who would come out. Would we get a massive amount of people like we did when we had the public safety complex because of the golf course issue? Or would we get no one and have difficulty even getting a quorum? You know, with the timing of it. Again, I, 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 I will be, and maybe I could be, I could be proven wrong at a town meeting, but I would be very surprised if this was, you know, the biggest issue for our residents and we would have a massive showing. And I've never, I haven't seen any groundswell of support like we did with the Burnett House, and my motion remains on the table. There was a second for discussion. I think we need to have a vote. Unless there's any other discussion, Ms. Fanna.
Again, I'd like to know when we're going to get the warrant article, and? And I don't think there's enough money in that article. And until I see the article with the summer money, I think this board should give a directive that we're gonna have an appraisal on the property. I don't know if a twenty-one E is required. It's been asked in the past, I've asked for it, and it's been considered on other parcels in this town. Uh, I think there's some obstacles here that I don't want not included in the article. And...
Can I comment?
And recreation, I was at the meeting, it's passive recreation. So I don't want anybody leaving here thinking we're developing it for something other than passive. And that needs to be defined on that site, what passive actually means. And if we're gonna re, if we're gonna market the house that's there, I need to know what the process is and who has the directive and the authority to do it without having to go back to the Historical Commission or another group to even... I really need to see the draft, the final draft that CPC is gonna present to town meeting for town council to look at, answering my questions.
So I'll, I'll just make one suggestion before we, if we were to go down that path, then we need, um, I think we would need three votes to say, yes, we want to even go to... If, if there's another vote that says, no, this isn't something that we are gonna, we, we, if there's another vote here that says, no, we're not gonna exercise a right of first refusal, then we don't need to, we don't wanna ask people to go and do all that work.
Well, I gotta see, I think we need to find out if there's an appetite to do all of that work first.
And I, I have some questions, I think we brought up questions here tonight. I think I'd be more comfortable if I had some answers to some of the questions Mrs. Fannin has brought up and that have been discussed tonight. I think I'd be much more comfortable taking a vote.
All right, so there's two on the fence.
And if we don't get them by our very next meeting, then we can say, I'm sorry, we're not satisfied, and I, we don't think we're doing...
I think that's fair.
Mister Shea, your thoughts?
So, I'll agree with, with Bonnie and Lisa.
Okay, so we will not vote tonight. We will look to see what is produced and if all the questions are answered.
Can we put a list of questions that we have together for Mister Purple?
Absolutely, and I would recommend every board and commission and every resident in the town of Southborough who has an idea for what they may wanna see CPC money used for. Um, also, i- i- I don't know what our audience is tonight, uh, what our viewing audience is tonight, um, but we should hear from all other, um, you know, concerned boards and committees as to what those funds could be used for. I would also like to see an analysis of what, um, the costs could be to the town, like Ms. Fannin was saying, of, um, of, of what we would, cost we would incur if we were to own the property for a pe- period of time, the cost that may be incurred to, um, for any, you know, for the historical pieces on that property to maintain those and upgrade those. Um, I'd also like to hear from Mister Valentine what the, um, prospective loss we may see from, um, and maybe Brian's not the right person, but, um, if we were to forego, and, you know, tax revenues that would come in, um, from, uh, and, you know, those new homes and new residents, um, that analysis would go out for obviously hundreds of years. So we would want to know that. So, yeah, I think there's a lot of questions that...
And we need, advisory needs to... I, I'm not sure if advisory has discussed this potential town meeting, or if they're taking a position, or if they have concerns that need to be addressed as well. I mean, I've...
The chair's sitting right here. Why don't we ask him?
You know, they may...
Can I, can I just say something about this process at risk of sinking everything right now? This is not the process, we came to you with an offer of money for the Board of Selectmen to do investigation. CPC historically has never developed projects. They're brought to us, we review, and then we write a warrant article. I was given a task to write a warrant article for a project that didn't exist without, in this type of project would be brought to us from the Board of Selectmen. And Dan, you weren't here when we offered eight thousand dollars for you to hire someone to help you create a project. And at that meeting, I have to say, our CPC and all the boards that met and got this together in like a week and a half after that meeting to be ready for tonight's meeting, did an outstanding, amazing job at pretty much an impossible task, knowing how important this is and the tight timeframe. I'm a little concerned at the comments, like, you don't have this, you need to have that. This is supposed to be a collaborative work together, not putting it on me, not complaining about the warrant article. I, I mean, you don't know how much work I spent in the last week trying to put this together, doing the research based on information I got, and what all these other committees who had, you know, emergency meetings not scheduled to come up with this to present to you.
Freddie, I was part of an emergency meeting on Shopsey.
And I was there.
You were sitting there, and I attended your meeting, so your statement is really unfair. A lot of people, you're right.
That's what I'm saying, a lot of people.
And they're all attempting to fill in the gaps. I left Shopsey with additional questions, and I would be remiss if I didn't ask them here, just like you do at your meetings. That's why I asked, is this a draft? Has your committee approved it? Because what I was hearing at your meeting is a little different than what I'm hearing this evening.
We all hear things differently.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm going to say, though, what I'm saying right now is that we're looking not for us to come back to you, but to be working together.
We are. We're asking questions.
Okay, so that's not what I, we're hearing that different, 'cause that's not what I've been hearing.
Okay, um, any other comments before we move on to our next agenda item? If you would, yeah? Mister Peters, welcome.
Adrian Peters, Advisory. I think it was the day after the last Board of Selectmen meeting, when this was discussed, or two days afterwards, I called, um, uh, Free, and I asked her, you know, what funds they have available, uh, what they seek, you know, what is, what is the situation with CPA funds? Um, and, uh, she couldn't give me an answer. I, I did ask that it would be good to see what's, you know, what's there in the future. Um, and I'm, to McKay's, Mister McKay's point is, is, you know, what do we do and what don't we do? And, uh, I think it would be appropriate to have a better feel. And we kind of know what's in the pipeline, uh, the golf course is one of them. And that we can see what it is that's going to be needed from the CPA funds over the five, over five years. You know, we kick it, uh, if we don't look at it in the long term, I think it's a short sighted decision. Um, I have had no feedback on, on the funds, and, you know, I think it's, uh, uh, it's inappropriate not to look at the five, at five years ahead, uh, what could it use, be used for, because there are a lot of things going on. Uh, we've had no feedback on the golf course yet, but it's, it's not going to be, uh, a, a few dollars. And, you know, I, I heard earlier there's a million dollars for the golf course, as far as I know, there's none. Uh, so, but I stand to be corrected. But that's my comment from Advisory.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, no more comments on this one, I'm seeing? Okay, so we'll move on to, um...
Final decision at our next meeting.
Final decision at our next meeting. All right, so, um, discussion...
Give a five-person vote.
Thank you, Mister and Miss Stout, for coming.
Thank you.
Um, discussion of draft policy for Selectmen Board and Committee appointments, so. Mister Purple?
Mister Chairman, uh, this is something that, um, we discussed, uh, at the last meeting. Um, I, I think that, um, uh, Mrs. Hale could speak to this. I know that, uh, Mrs. Esposito could speak to this if we've, if, uh, she was here. Um, you know, we've been spending an awful lot of time on appointments. We've been spending an awful lot of time on how to deal with the appointment process that the Board conducts for boards and committees. Do we interview, do we not interview, how do we advertise, what do we? And, and we're, we're kind of chasing our tail on a lot of these things. And I know that administratively, um, we've been spending a lot of time on this that probably could be spent on other things. And so, um, uh, we had talked a little bit about putting together, you know, a policy. I know that, you know, sometimes, you know, it, it's, it's easy for the board to say, we know what we're doing, we know how we're doing this. And, you know, and, um, because you do, because you do it all the time. But, y- you know, in order to be consistent, you know, and it is nice to be able to have it written down and be able to have people, you know, you can point and say, this is how we do it, this time, every time, um, you know. Um, and, and so this is something Mrs. Esposito actually had brought, um, with her, had done in another community, and, um, wanted to bring this to you for your consideration, you know, as to how we will go about, you know, making appointments for boards and committees moving forward. Um, so, i- it's, it's a, you know, it's a draft policy. Um, I know we've just gone through probably as many appointments and everything as we're gonna do in one night. Um, but I could tell you the horror story to get to this, to what we did tonight, which actually looked pretty smooth.
Do you think this will so, not solve it? Probably not solve it.
No, I don't think it's gonna solve it, but I think it's gonna give you, well, I, so, yes, I, you know...
Because we're still gonna do all, I mean, I read through this.
Right.
I don't know that, that this is the, the panacea.
I, I think it, I think it gives you, I think it gives you more structure than you've got now. I think it gives you some latitude in terms of when you interview and, and, you know, when you, when you don't have to interview.
So it doesn't actually give us that latitude that I was hoping to see, because it, 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 um, in particular, it says, the, the Selectmen shall interview in public session all new applicants, but we may get...
Well, no, because it does say the Selectmen may waive the interviewing of any candidate who A, has previously interviewed with the Board in the past twelve months, B, has previously served on another town board or committee, or C, at its discretion by majority.
But, what if, okay, but what about when the Chair, the Chairman of a committee suggests someone to us, and they haven't been on one before, they haven't served, you know, they haven't, in the last twelve months, haven't served? And I guess we would then, what, take a, take a vote as to not, whether or not we wanna waive those other requirements and...
You, that, that, that is, that is your...
I'd like to make this a lot faster process than more cumbersome. But, maybe that is our prerogative, we could just do that every time, if we had to.
Well, like I said, it does, it does give you an out, you know, in terms of, um, you know, in terms of the interviewing portion of it.
And it also talks about everything, you know, shall be on TV, but we don't always have TV. So I mean, I'm looking at little things, but there's something jumped out at me that may not always be. And then if we, oh, that one ha, didn't happen to be, you know, recorded on TV that night, well, then none of that applies, we have to then redo something the next time Sam is available.
Right.
So, little things, I mean, maybe it's a great step forward, but I just noticed a few things like that.
No, and, and, and like I said, that's, I mean, if there are things that the, that the Board is looking, that's why it's got draft across it.
Do we?
So, um...
Are folks happy with it now?
Well, I think we need to do something to avoid the uncomfortable situ, I thought was an uncomfortable situation that we had the last meeting, where we had Mister Robbins in for an interview, and then had to tell him, well, no, we're not gonna take up the appointment tonight.
Even though everyone liked him.
We don't, yeah, and we were, I thought, ready to appoint him, and did appoint him tonight unanimously and under consent agenda. But, you know, if nothing else, I think it sets a, a process that the town needs to follow to advertise for these positions. Personally, I'm happy with it. Uh, I think it's gonna go a long way to avoiding situations like we just had. You know, we, we wanna make sure that, that those that take the time to, to volunteer are, are treated fairly and, you know, aren't put in an uncomfortable position, so.
I agree with that. Other thoughts on this particular draft?
I'm comfortable with it. We can always revise it if we find an issue with it. Fine with it.
Um, so, uh, another question, when it says interested residents shall complete a citizens' activity form, so it's mandatory, they have, is there no other mechanism than the actual form? What if they sent in an email and a resume? Would that suffice or no?
I'll let Ms. Hale speak to it. I know it is easier when people do it online, it allows us to track, to track things a lot easier.
People can apply online, or often I'll send the Word document of the volunteer form to someone. We're looking, through this policy, we're, we're looking for something in writing from the Board in, in consistency for the process. As Mrs. Fannin have just noted, it can certainly be tweaked, you know, whenever the Board chooses to do that. I, I do think it's important, just for our documentation and for your board meeting packets, that, um, any volunteer d- does fill out the form, whether it's, you know, a hard copy of it when they walk in, and sometimes that happens. Folks will just come in and, and stop in to see us and ask questions, and they'll fill it out right there. Um, we'd like to see a resume, you know, when that's possible, um, just to give the Board more information about someone's skill set and, and background. But we are looking for a, a consistent process and to have it in writing.
Okay. And I, and I think the other thing too, um, and just to point out, you know, it has in here that these forms come to the Selectmen's office. We had an issue, um, which I won't get into in specifics, with, with part of this process, where one of these application forms went to the committee. Um, we never saw it until really late in the process. Um, and there were some issues which we then had to extricate, you know, our, ourselves from. Um, but we had never seen the candidates. So, you know, people need to know where to go to apply, you know, 'cause when someone comes in, you know, when, when Vanessa, you know, receives an application from a volunteer, automatically our office is generating a letter to the resident thanking them for applying, thanking them for wanting to serve, and then we'll send them out, uh, to the committee chair. So for recreation, something will go to Mister Schiffern, we let the resident know that that has gone to the Chair for the consideration. You know, sometimes the Chair reaches out, they go to meetings, they check things out, see if it's what they think it's going to be. And that's how, you know, recommendations are then generated for this board to consider.
Okay. All right, so I'm hearing folks like it, and we'll make a, a good move that we accept the, uh, the proposal um, for, uh, the policy on, uh, boards and committees. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, public comment? Seeing none, that will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On, yes?
People adjourn. Is it fair to say that we each can submit to CPC or to mark what we feel should be in the article?
Sure. I think it's a great idea. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming.